Traffic from this potential retail development. When we did our traffic study and determined what improvements needed to be done at the intersection of Fielding and Lloyd Expressway. So, traffic will be right in, right out, directly onto this property, but we'll have an access to get through and utilize that improved Fielding intersection as well. NDOT and City Engineer are still working on those plans. This potential retail development. When we did our traffic study and determined what potential retail development. When we did our traffic study and determined what improvements need to be done at the intersection of Fielding and Lloyd Expressway.
Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided?
No, it is not. And they requested that we consider an access to get through. That this property would have to be used. That this potential retail development.
I thought that the numbers are reasonable. I thought it was a good thing. How do you expect that to happen? Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided?
NDOT and City Engineer are still working on this plan. When we did our traffic study and determined what potential retail development.
Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided?
Traffic would be right in, right out. And they're requesting that we consider an access to get through. That this property would have to be used. That this potential retail development. NDOT and City Engineer are still working on this plan. When we did our traffic study and determined what potential retail development. Traffic would be right in, right out. Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Traffic would be right in, right out. And they're requesting that this property would have to be used. That this property would have to be used. That this potential retail development. Traffic would be right in, right out. Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Traffic would be right in, right out. And they're requesting that this property would have to be used. That this property would have to be used. That this potential retail development. Traffic would be right in, right out. Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Traffic would be right in, right out. And they're requesting that this property would have to be used. That this property would have to be used. That this potential retail development. Traffic would be right in, right out. Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Traffic would be right in, right out. And they're requesting that this property would have to be used. That this property would have to be used. That this potential retail development. Traffic would be right in, right out. Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Traffic would be right in, right out. And they're requesting that this property would have to be used. That this property would have to be used. That this potential retail development. Traffic would be right in, right out. Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Traffic would be right in, right out. And they're requesting that this property would have to be used. That this potential retail development. Traffic would be right in, right out. Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Traffic would be right in, right out. And they're requesting that this property would have to be used. That this potential retail development. Traffic would be right in, right out. Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Traffic would be right in, right out. And they're requesting that this property would have to be used. That this potential retail development. Traffic would be right in, right out. Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Traffic would be right in, right out. And they're requesting that this property would have to be used. That this potential retail development. Traffic would be right in, right out. Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Traffic would be right in, right out. And they're requesting that this property would have to be used. That this potential retail development. Traffic would be right in, right out. Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Traffic would be right in, right out. And they're requesting that this property would have to be used. That this potential retail development. Traffic would be right in, right out. Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Traffic would be right in, right out. And they're requesting that this property would have to be used. That this potential retail development. Traffic would be right in, right out. Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Traffic would be right in, right out. And they're requesting that this property would have to be used. That this potential retail development. Traffic would be right in, right out. Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Traffic would be right in, right out. And they're requesting that this property would have to be used. That this potential retail development. Traffic would be right in, right out. Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Traffic would be right in, right out. And they're requesting that this property would have to be used. That this potential retail development. Traffic would be right in, right out. Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Traffic would be right in, right out. And they're requesting that this property would have to be used. That this potential retail development. Traffic would be right in, right out. Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Traffic would be right in, right out. And they're requesting that this property would have to be used. That this potential retail development. Traffic would be right in, right out. Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Traffic would be right in, right out. And they're requesting that this property would have to be used. That this potential retail development. Traffic would be right in, right out. Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Traffic would be right in, right out. And they're requesting that this property would have to be used. That this potential retail development. Traffic would be right in, right out. Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Traffic would be right in, right out. And they're requesting that this property would have to be used. That this potential retail development. Traffic would be right in, right out. Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Traffic would be right in, right out. And they're requesting that this property would have to be used. That this potential retail development. Traffic would be right in, right out. Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Traffic would be right in, right out. And they're requesting that this property would have to be used. That this potential retail development. Traffic would be right in, right out. Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Traffic would be right in, right out. And they're requesting that this property would have to be used. That this potential retail development. Traffic would be right in, right out. Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Traffic would be right in, right out. And they're requesting that this property would have to be used. That this potential retail development. Traffic would be right in, right out. Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Traffic would be right in, right out. And they're requesting that this property would have to be used. That this potential retail development. Traffic would be right in, right out. Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Traffic would be right in, right out. And they're requesting that this property would have to be used. That this potential retail development. Traffic would be right in, right out. Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Traffic would be right in, right out. And they're requesting that this property would have to be used. That this potential retail development. Traffic would be right in, right out. Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Traffic would be right in, right out. And they're requesting that this property would have to be used. That this potential retail development. Traffic would be right in, right out. Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Traffic would be right in, right out. And they're requesting that this property would have to be used. That this potential retail development. Traffic would be right in, right out. Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Traffic would be right in, right out. And they're requesting that this property would have to be used. That this potential retail development. Traffic would be right in, right out. Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Traffic would be right in, right out. And they're requesting that this property would have to be used. That this potential retail development. Traffic would be right in, right out. Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Traffic would be right in, right out. And they're requesting that this property would have to be used. That this potential retail development. Traffic would be right in, right out. Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Traffic would be right in, right out. And they're requesting that this property would have to be used. That this potential retail development. Traffic would be right in, right out. Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Traffic would be right in, right out. And they're requesting that this property would have to be used. That this potential retail development. Traffic would be right in, right out. Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Traffic would be right in, right out. And they're requesting that this property would have to be used. That this potential retail development. Traffic would be right in, right out. Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Traffic would be right in, right out. And they're requesting that this property would have to be used. That this potential retail development. Traffic would be right in, right out. Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Traffic would be right in, right out. And they're requesting that this property would have to be used. That this potential retail development. Traffic would be right in, right out. Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Traffic would be right in, right out. And they're requesting that this property would have to be used. That this potential retail development. Traffic would be right in, right out. Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Traffic would be right in, right out. And they're requesting that this property would have to be used. That this potential retail development. Traffic would be right in, right out. Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Traffic would be right in, right out. And they're requesting that this property would have to be used. That this potential retail development. Traffic would be right in, right out. Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Traffic would be right in, right out. And they're requesting that this property would have to be used. That this potential retail development. Traffic would be right in, right out. Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided? Is this a different traffic study than the one that was provided?
If, you know, if Mr. Danks, you know, I know he's got a lot going on in terms of other things, so, I mean, I can do that, but I would like to, in as unattrusive way as possible, talk to the companies about their lack of compliance and sort of what they foresee for the future in this regard.
Councilwoman, I think that the companies should be, should come to council instead of just having one or two talking to them. I think they should make an appearance before council. Before Gage took over, when we had in-house, when we handled tax abatements through DMD, the companies did come before us, and I think we need to start that procedure back. The ones that are not in compliance, I don't want to hear what you have to say or anybody else have to say.
I think we should, one or the other, yeah.
I must confess, when you read the letters of those people that are not in compliance, they really are heartfelt, but I have no objection for them burying their souls in front of us. Is that a pattern, perhaps we could?
With me is Chance Sizemore.
Could we bring that together next year, or is that, is that something you want to do this year?
I'd like to start that immediately.
Yeah, so...
I think there are four or five that are out of compliance?
Correct. It would be, in this case, Mead Johnson, SSNC Technologies, and Joe W. Morgan. So, three. Two of the ones that are in yellow represent multiple projects from Mead Johnson, which have gone, I know the explanation's gone in the past, which really is the split between Bristol Myers and Mead Johnson as two separate companies, and no longer can count the Bristol Myers employees. But in regard to having them come before council, it would just require us to send them a letter on your behalf, requesting that a representative come to the next council meeting. And I believe from my, the switch prior to me taking over this role in training, I think some of the transition to a letter instead of having companies come each time, just because it was dragging out over the course of a year rather than, or as I got them, rather than being presented to you as a kind of a unit, is my understanding.
As I remember it, there wasn't much being done at all.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And the letter was the first step of us having some accountability for that.
Correct.
And then we started talking about clawbacks, which...
Correct. We're just, you know, it's, we spent a long time going through our old files, finding, you know, some companies had never submitted, and they were in year six or seven. So, when we started looking at them, we realized that there was some issue in the whole compliance procedure, and so we wanted to make sure that we were actually following up with the companies. But in regard to Connie's statement, absolutely, that's not that big of a deal. We will go ahead and start submitting those, if that's the request of the council.
Do we have a, do we need a motion or a vote on that, or?
I'll make a motion.
That when they're not in compliance, that they come before us.
Any, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
On the, on the Joe Morgan, look, in the yellow, he has 3.1 million in total investment in personal property, projected 1.7, but I noticed down in the, in the real property, he's kind of off by 600, but in totality, in total investment, if we're net right, he's still considerably high.
But that would be part of the explanation as to maybe why.
Well, Sam is asking.
Correct. I don't know, I didn't run those numbers. I think the biggest concern on their side also was the employment number.
It's not off by much.
Yeah, and it's not off by much. We, we requested letters from anybody below 90%.
Below 90?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other comments?
I would like, at this point, because we have Gage here, to let you all know that about 10 days ago, I met with a new company called Microbiid. CEO is Margaret Skelly, and Dr. O'Reilly from, they live in Dublin. He's actually a professor in University of Cincinnati, and they make mycelized aldehydes. And basically, what a myceline aldehyde is, aldehydes vaporize very quickly, they disappear real quickly. But if you can put them on in an inert little nanogram-type molecule, they'll sit around, and they are developing something that will kill everything in terms of fungus, bacteria, protozoa, viruses. For example, if you had a well that was full of cholera, you could put a gallon of this in, it would 100% kill the cholera, and three days later, you could drink the water. Absolutely incredible, and I think this is pretty exciting. We're trying very hard to find a birthing place for them. B. Johnson thought they were going to have a place, and then for some odd reason, they decided they didn't. I think that's a mistake, but that's my comment on it. And I just want to let you know how exciting that is, because I think that could, within a year, two, or five, be the first private research entity for the med school second or third block. Of course, this is what we're looking for over there. I wanted to thank you guys for, for doing that.
Thank you.
I must confess that they tried to bribe me by, by bringing some Irish salmon flies, but that's okay.
I had a question.
It was a lovely gesture, by the way.
Um, are you, would you like to accept the tax-phasing compliance reports with those that are in compliance already?
Sure. All those in favor of, I'm sorry.
Can we get a motion in a second?
Those, those in compliance reports?
Uh-oh.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. That makes your job a little easier. Thank you so much for coming here.
Thank you.
Alan Mount, join us.
The presentation this evening, I've asked Mike Leibitzky to cover the presentation with you this evening. We do have a handout, which I'll provide to you. But we've been working on a communications program related to our inspection and cleaning projects with the sewer lines and manholes. It's called Clear Path, and Mike is here to explain what we're trying to do with the Clear Path program.
Thank you, Alan, Mr. President, Council. Here tonight to talk about Clear Path, which is a new initiative that the Water and Sewer Utility is launching to just help the discussion about what easements are. Part of our consent decree involves not only a large capital investment, but also proper management and operations of our existing system. And that has become a challenge as we're satisfying the first round of those requirements. The challenges really revolve around the timeline that's been set for us as part of this federally mandated program. The goal of the entire consent decree is to reduce the volume of combination sewer overflow that goes in Pigeon Creek and the Ohio River, but it's also to completely eliminate sanitary sewer overflows that exist on the outskirts beyond the combination sewer, existing, existing combination sewer limits. And the elimination of those sanitary sewer overflows are a direct result of improving our operations, our maintenance, our cleaning, and inspection cycles. There are fines for not accomplishing all the goals within the criteria of the consent decree. Different criteria have different fines and penalties, and we can discuss what that means on the operation and maintenance side in just a minute. As I mentioned on Slide 4, there's two parts to the consent decree. The capital improvements part, which, when it's all said and done, will be the largest capital project in Evansville's history, taken as one program. And that was submitted in May of 2013, and we are still in negotiation for what that will, will look like in its final, its final sense. But with that, there's also a requirement to inspect all manholes and small diameter sewers within seven years for sewers that are in the range of 8-inch to 15-inch in size. That's part of what we call the Capacity Management, Operation, and Maintenance portion of the consent decree, or CMOM, is the acronym. The goal of CMOM through inspection and cleaning is to minimize or eliminate line blockages, failures, backups into, into homes, essentially get them before they cause a problem. We have been working at this now, that we're in the middle of our fifth year, and we have seen reductions in areas where we have been very proactively working. But we have an issue that's emerging as we are heading towards our, trying to maintain and achieve our 100% on inspection and cleaning of these lines and manholes. And they are that as we work from the outskirts of the system through the sanitary sewer system into the combined sewer areas, we are having challenges into getting into manholes and sewer lines that are in easements. And it's simply a function of the age of the community and neighborhood we're moving into. The newer neighborhoods, the newer subdivisions, easements are typically cleared. Fences and landscaping, other improvements are typically not constructed on the easement, they're left for the utilities. But over time, over decades, with changes in homeownership, people simply forget that easements exist, and they start building their fences, start building their landscaping, start putting their yard barns, above-ground pools, things of that nature in easements. So, that's our challenge. The CMOM operation is run through the engineering department of the Water and Sewer Utility. We currently have nine inspectors that are trying to perform and complete this work. And as I said, we started on the outskirts, and we've been working our way in over the first five years. So, Operation Clear Path is an initiative to educate residents about, one, the sewer inspections and cleanings that we're required to do, but also educate them about their easements and their responsibilities with their easements that exist on their property. Easements, in a nutshell, are strips of ground typically that were granted to, for public utility installation to service those property owners, either that exact property owner or an adjacent owner, or, you know, as you extend out, all the way through a subdivision or a neighborhood. The problem that we have, the challenges that we have, are that hundreds of these easements are now blocked with improvements, private improvements on private property. And these obstacles range from, you know, shrubs, trees, fences, yard barns, garages, above-ground swimming pools, in-ground swimming pools. We've really run across an entire gamut of things that have been built in easements. And we're, we're running into time challenges because our, our requirements are to be 100% completed by November 1st of 2017 with our first round of inspection. We're running into time challenges coordinating with homeowners and residents to get into these, through these easements to, so we can complete our inspection and cleaning work. And it's really hampering our progress, or starting to really hamper our progress. The other dis-benefit of not being able to access these sewer lines even today, not just for our inspection and cleaning, is that our maintenance crews, when we have a call-in of a sewer backup, or, you know, sewage in somebody's basement, or in somebody's backyard, we can't always necessarily easily get to that spot to assist our customer to clean up the mess, to stop the release of the sewage. So, clear easements on an ongoing basis will have a benefit to the utility in our serviceability to our customers. Slide 9 is a, a graphic of some of the things that we have encountered, just, you know, not, not all easement obstructions are created equal. And we are, we are trying to work through the challenges. We have, as I said, we have nine inspectors. At least one is dedicated all the time to doing reconnaissance, to locate manholes, and identify if there's access issues. To date, there's, there's a couple of pictures here, you know, you can see a yard barn that we found that was actually built over the manhole, probably to conceal the manhole from not being in the backyard. We had to move that yard barn. The next picture shows, you know, large equipment that we need to get through the easement. So, our, while our intention is to try to work around, you know, we're not up here to ask for a clear removal of easements, please don't hear me incorrectly. We are dedicated to working with folks to try to work around what's there, but sometimes we just can't work around what's there. The picture of the equipment that we use on Slide 11 is an example of, you know, the width that we need. So, that, that, that tracked easement machine is about five feet wide. So, it, sometimes it fits through a privacy fence gate, for example, and sometimes it doesn't. So, all this causes delay in, in what we're trying to do. A pretty difficult situation on Slide 12 shows that you have a sewer that runs between homes to get from street to street, and right in the middle of that run, right where you see the 10-inch by 10-inch, you can see a garage, actually, it's a four-way garage. It's a garage that's, has four doors on it, one for each homeowner in that corner, and that garage is built directly over our sewer easement. So, big challenge for us, you know, to try to get in there and inspect and clean that line. It would become even a bigger challenge if we were going, had to rehabilitate or replace that line. So, these are the types of things that we're just trying to get out to the general public so they understand, you know, where we are and what we're trying to do. How we got here, you know, we, we have been playing catch-up since we assumed management of the Water and Sewer Utility back in 2010. 2010 was our first year of seven that we were required to start our inspection and cleaning cycles. There's several milestones there. One is that we have to clean and inspect at least 75 miles a year, and we've been doing that, either through in-service, in-house, or outsourcing to help us meet that mileage, those mileage goals. But the second major milestone is something we're reaching November of this year. On November 1st of 2015, we have to be 70% finished with our 610 miles of 8- to 15-inch sewer line that exists. And then November 1st of 2017, we have to be 100% complete. So, you can see as we're approaching that 70% mark, the 80/20 rule is starting to come into play. You know, we're, we easily are going to be able to get about 80%, but that last 20% is going to be a real challenge. We've had to, you know, we, we've been deferring inspections that have been challenges to date until we were able to get the word out. Some of the other challenges we face is, are that sewer lines were sometimes built privately by developers, and we now assume those sewer lines when it's appropriate, but if they're not mapped well, so we're, we're trying to map as we go as well. And then, most importantly, easements are usually not clearly marked at all. Property owners may not even know that they have an easement. So, as I said on Slide 14, we have 610 miles of sewer line that we're trying to complete inspections and cleanings on. It says we're about 330 miles complete, but this slide is, it's about six weeks old. We're actually about 370 miles complete right now. And by 2017, we'll be expected to be 100% clean, which means we have to do about 100 miles a year. We have been on a clip of about 82 to 90 miles a year. So we're, we're, as we get more sophisticated with what we do and try to up our production rate, the challenges also are coming at us more frequently too, so. And this cycle is not a one-time deal. So the, the first, the fir-, after the first cycle of 2017, then the, the same consent decree requires us to redo this every 10 years. So it's a perpetual, it's a perpetual requirement. One of the main reasons we wanted to present today is just to kind of, you know, start the conversation with the public about what, whether property owners know that they have an easement or not, and if they're responsible for it. All easements are on a property deed or a platted subdivision. That can be found in the recorder's office. We have tried to put together searchable aerial maps on ewsu.com, front slash easement, where we've identified at least if a sewer line exists. And you can go and look at your address arially and see if there's a sewer line that's close. We did a quick query in the GIS mapping that we have, and about 24,000 parcels have a sewer line that is on or within five feet of their property by the map. And to me, that tells me that's most likely in an easement. Most of those 24,000 folks, however, I can guarantee you, don't necessarily know that they have that easement. And you can also look at property maps that are available to the residents on this, within the assessor's office. Most obstacles can be costly to move, and we know that, and we're trying to be sensitive to that. That's why we're trying to get the word out there, let them know what their responsibilities are, let them know what our needs are. You know, I talked about the website that we launched last, the end of last month. We also had a media release the end of last month, a social media release on Facebook and Twitter, I believe, for the Renew Evansville brand, the Renew Evansville Initiative. We had a virtual public meeting, public town hall meeting on WNIN two weeks ago. We will put bill inserts, information in our bill inserts, starting this month in July. And as we go into neighborhoods, we are going to prepare a letter to let our folks know that we're entering a neighborhood and that manholes inspectors will be out looking for the infrastructure and also identifying if there's access problems. If they, if that inspector identifies an access problem, then they, they will either talk to the homeowner, that just, just the initial findings, or leave a door hanger if no one's home, that, of the initial findings, and that that will be back. And then at that time, a field manager will be there to discuss what the options are, whether it's a right-of-entry for someone who has a manhole directly in their backyard, or clearing easements down the backside of an entire half-city block. I mean, that's, those are the things we're up against. And my, as I said, very few easements today, you can go down and look down and see a completely clear easement. At least one person seems to have a yard barn or a fence, or a pool, or landscaping, or something in that easement. So, but that's what we're up against, about 30% or 24,000 parcels going in. Not, not everybody has something on their property that's in the way. And again, we'll certainly try to work around anything that is in the way if we can. We need some minimum clearances for our machinery. That's it. Are there, are there any questions?
Any questions from council?
This may be a segue into the next topic, but obviously, you're talking about cleaning and those sort of things, but easements exist for other reasons too, so you, if you have to replace it. As to the hotel and the medical center, is there an easement that may have to be vacated, or is the parking garage due to be built on an area where there's a storm surge?
No, to my knowledge, there was a vacated right-of-way, and there was a, there was a sewer project to move that sewer from that right-of-way.
Okay, so we're moving the sewer to, to make room for that, and that hasn't been done yet, correct?
It's been bid.
What's the, what's the anticipated cost of that?
I don't know off the top of my head. I'm not the project manager. I host the project managers. That was actually opened when I was on vacation, so I don't know.
What's your guess? Five million?
It was probably four something, yeah. So that, that sewer relocation is not just that for that. So that's also part of our long-range integrated overflow control plan, which is part of the larger capital portion of this solution set. We identified some advantages, actually, to move that sewer all over to Cherry Street to combine, combination sewer volumes into one place, which will give us advantage down the road. So yes, we, we did move it for, for the, the integrated overflow control plan as well.
Is that being paid for out of that bond, or is it paid out of some other bond?
That's a sewer revenue bond, I believe.
Any other questions? Any questions from the crowd? I must say, about three or four years ago, when you first got your camera, I was called with a guy whose front yard had flooded four years in a row. He had to replant his tree four times in a row, if I remember that. You guys came down there the next day, did an angio, well, you did a camera diagnosis of it.
Our version of the angio.
Yeah, and did a sort of a cutting angioplasty for an 80% obstruction of a root, and it was completely cured. It was, it was, it was amazing.
Are recurring blockages our way down?
Yeah. I'll, I'll take this opportunity, Mr. Mount, I'm going to be sending you an email tomorrow about a problem that I got from an email about low water pressure in Tara Lane off of Lake Drive. I haven't, John, I haven't had a chance to, Councilman Friend, I haven't had a chance to notify you about this particular problem that I was notified today, but I will tomorrow. So I will be sending you an email about diagnosing why allegedly there's low water pressure at Tara Lane on Lake Drive, but I do appreciate your thing. Any other questions about this? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess Ms. Schuler's not going to be here tonight.
Nick Sireno, Assistant City Attorney. Yes, Sarah is in California, and she'd have that, yeah, she visited the Redwood Forest with her children and things like that. So she's probably in a happier place right now, but she will be back this week and is available for any questions, because to the extent there's construction nuance that I can't answer, she'll be happy to help you with that. So as I said, Nick Sireno, City Attorney's Office. I believe on your desk, we placed responses to Mr. Ari's questions that were posed at the last council meeting, and I have a copy of those same responses for Mr. Ari, if he would, if he would like those. But I believe on the agenda, this is billed as an update regarding the hotel. As you might recall, the mayor was here on March 30th, as was I, and at that time, we presented to the council the revised agreement with our developer for the downtown convention hotel. It was called the Second amended and restated Development Agreement. That agreement has not changed. I think, you know, sometimes there's rumors and innuendo that go around regarding this project, and that has not changed. Since that time, to the extent there would ever be a change, it would have to be approved at a public hearing, before the ERC, or a public meeting, rather. So that has changed. At that time, I believe the mayor indicated to this body that it would take about 90 days to revise the design documents for the hotel project. That has occurred. As you can see, the documents lying over there, they've been made available since we received them last week at the Department Metropolitan Development. I think we made some efforts to get President Adams a copy. I don't know if he got them yet. I don't know if he would want to review those, but nonetheless, they're available. To the extent you have any specific questions, I would, I would, on those, I would direct those to Sarah. I, I have no ability to read those. So at this point, the document, the design documents are completed with input from Hunt. That process was done to ensure that it would be brought in within the existing budget, and we believe that we're there. As I stand before you today, I'm, I'm told that we are with, now within budget. The design documents have been submitted to the state for state design release. Hunt is going through final pricing on various bid packages. By the end of the month, we anticipate the developer entering into a guaranteed maximum price contract with Hunt to ensure that it gets brought in within, within budget. And furthermore, and then finally, we anticipate that as, as these different things play out, the, the, the brand should be awarded mid-August, early to mid-August, finalized financing with an anticipated close mid, mid-August. So that's the update, where things stand today. I think it's good news. I, I guess, you know, people are going to have certain questions regarding details of the project, and I, and I get that. But this, this is the fourth go-around on this for a reason. It, it hasn't been an easy project. It's been very hard. I think everyone involved has been maybe not surprised, but, but unhappy maybe with how hard it's been, but we're there. You know, we have a design within budget for a 240-room downtown convention-style hotel that we believe will be the fix that we need for our downtown convention business. There'll be high synergies with the med school that's going in. We have a good project, and it's going to be subject to the same brand standards that we anticipated. It's going to be a Hilton Doubletree. So with that, I'll open it up to your questions.
Any questions from council?
If there's a guaranteed maximum bid, how is the city's money fit into that equation? Are we the last to go in? Because it's up to $20 million bond, correct? Are we the last to go in, or are we in?
No, it depends on, right. It depends on what you're talking about, okay? So with respect to the hotel, where our 9.9 million is in, that's just, it's, it's dollar-for-dollar. We know, we know, up to the 9.9 million, we know it's going to cost more than 19 and a half million bucks, or 20 million bucks, the hotel that is. So you know our money is all in on that, because it's dollar-for-dollar with the developer.
Okay, so really, we're just putting in the first money, then, is what you're saying? Is it dollar-for-dollar with the developer?
It's dollar-for-dollar with the developer. And the developer is not just HCW, but it's also Old National Bank.
Wasn't the original one, the one, when we first got into this, it was really, wasn't it 7.7 million?
7.5.
7.5 million now, somewhere up to 9.9.
That is correct.
I'm getting a lot of feedback from some of my, my people in my ward that they can't understand why, why we seem like the hotel itself, the footprint's smaller, but yet though, we have much more into it. It's, it's, that's, that's, that's something that's giving me some heartburn.
No, I, I understand the question. You know, reality set in. You know, we, we were given certain budget constraints. We've worked within those constraints, and now we've gotten to the point today where we have a project that we think accomplishes the economic development goal that we set out to achieve. Do I wish there was a rooftop bar? Of course. I would love to sit on a 10-story rooftop bar, but our hotel consultant, Rob Hundon, gave us a number of rooms that we thought that was necessary in order to serve the convention business. This project achieves that goal. So maybe we don't like the fact, maybe we don't like the fact it doesn't have a rooftop bar, but it's still a nice hotel. It's a Hilton Doubletree branded hotel. It has enough rooms to serve the convention business, and it gets us where we need to be from an economic standpoint.
Nick, I guess what I hear people saying is that we committed funds to build an elaborate hotel, and now it looks like we're just going to have a nice Fairfield Inn.
Well, I don't, I guess I don't really know exactly what a Fairfield looks like. But once again, it's a Hilton Doubletree brand. I, I think maybe there is a little naivete about what we can expect for a certain amount of money. You have to recall, I wouldn't even be here talking about this project today if Old National Bank hadn't agreed to put in $10 million. So we can't forget that not only did we not fund a four-star hotel, we didn't even fund Hilton Doubletree. But fortunately, we have a partnership with Old National Bank, and they are making this possible in part. Obviously, the citizens of Evansville in part as well. But this is the type, you know, people don't necessarily expect to stay at a, I, I don't want to get into the details of the convention business, but we feel that this is what we need, this is sufficient, this gets the job done.
The Jehovah Witness Convention was here, what, a couple, a month ago or so? Did they have a hard time finding places to stay?
I have no idea. You need to, someone from the Convention Visitors Bureau for that.
Any other comments?
Well, now you're, now you're saying it's sufficient and it's good enough, and, I mean. Connor, the thing is, is when we, you know, when we committed the 16 and a half million plus the other money that the county and the CBB were going to commit, you know, the, you talk about the naivete, that was perpetrated by HCW, the same people who are, who have offered this project as well. You know, I mean, if, if the naivete sends to us, they're the ones that were, that were selling it to us. So either, one, they knew they couldn't deliver on it, or they realized that, look, once we get them on the hook, then we got them, and then we can value engineer it all the way down to a five-story hotel that, albeit will be nice, but certainly not what we committed the money for. I mean, there's, there's absolutely no doubt in my mind, or anybody in this community, that the pictures that we were shown of the glass facade, 10-story, you know, beautiful building that would be a centerpiece of any downtown, is now reduced to a five-story structure that you could find along I-69. Now, there-
I respectfully disagree. I, I think if you view the mockups, it's-
But the thing is, is once we committed the money, we weren't given an opportunity.
That is not a fair characterization.
Well, it is.
No, it's not.
And once we, once we committed the money, we weren't given an opportunity to, to retract that or to say yes or no to the new design, because the bond had already been committed. But, you know, that's, that's my take on it. Do I want a downtown hotel? I do. I'm just not sure that, that what has now been promised and drawn up and, and debated ad nauseam is the right thing for the city at this point.
Well, I, here's a point that I would make. I, you know, first of all, it's a Hilton Doubletree hotel, okay? It's going to meet the brand standards. You wave your hands, but this is, this is what fits our budget. Second of all, once again, Old National Bank is putting in $10 million towards this project because the city didn't want to commit that much of a subsidy. If this, if this project doesn't go, Old National needs to start paying back the county for its naming rights. So, so the point is, is in the future, it's not as though there's going to be another $10 million from a corporate partner to make this project feasible. Furthermore, furthermore, the cost of the project is only going to go up. It's not going to get cheaper next year, it's not going to get cheaper two years from now, and we don't know that we're going to have a corporate partner for 10, putting in $10 million in a couple of years. This project is feasible now, it'll be a very nice hotel, and it will achieve the goals that we need.
And we'll be building at the same time as the med school, so we'll probably have to bring in workers to do that.
Why would we have to do that?
Because the demand will see-
Industrial contractors is building the medical school.
Right, but they'll use-
Well, you know, I, I would respectfully, that's pure speculation. I, I would have Sarah Schuler respond to that, because I don't think, you know, you and I are practicing lawyers, I don't think we know how construction projects in Evansville get staffed.
Well, there's only so many members of electrical workers, and basically, everybody's working right now. So it's not speculative, I mean, an 18 months of construction as opposed to three years will inevitably require outside labor. I mean, it, you-
I don't, I don't know that. And I, where's Paul Green? Is he, is he in the audience? No?
I'm sure you would at least agree that had these been staggered, that three years of construction would have been preferable to sort of the mass-
Of course, we wanted to be done by now, absolutely.
Okay.
I just, I had a couple of questions. I have filed a document that I wrote that is a summary of, that sets the record straight. I'm going to offer you a copy of that, if you want to-
I have read it.
Okay. And I, and I, if you've read it, then you'll know, I'll tell you that the second-to-last paragraph to the bottom, I altered to take into consideration the relocated sewer line as well as the site preparation work. So depending on how you look at the, the parking garage, I mean, the public contribution to the hotel and conference center is anywhere from 28.6 million to 33.25, again, depending on where you consider that 4.65 million. You know, I want to talk, I have three points. First of all, you mentioned O&amp;B and a corporate partner. O&amp;B is getting an ownership interest in this project for its contribution. The public is not. So when O&amp;B tells you that they have formed a partnership, if this hotel is profitable, they will see a return on their investment.
I, you know, I, I'm not in a position to speak to what their deal is. I just know that, given the structure of the deal, this would not be some- that, given the structure of the deal, this would not be something that they would do if it were, if they did not believe it was for the benefit, for the best interest of Evansville.
Yeah, and the translation there is that it's, they understand they will not see a return on their investment.
I can't answer for, I can't answer for them, but my point is, is I think you're making the point that they're getting a lot in return here, and I don't think that's accurate.
Well, you can't have it both ways. I mean, you can't, you know, they've made an investment, so, and that investment is structured at a 25% partnership agreement with H C W. And although there was a 12% guarantee in profit to H C W on revenue that exceeds expenditures, if they hit those marks, they get a return on their investment. So you don't get to call them sort of a selfless corporate citizen that's not expecting anything in return, and at the same time, trump the idea that this hotel is going to be profitable or, I mean, you just can't have it both ways.
I don't follow your argument regarding Old National Bank.
You don't follow the argument that they're a partner, that they've made an investment, that, that if there's enough profit off of the hotel, they'll get a return?
There exists some possibility, yes, but you're way out there in terms of the realm of possibility, I think.
You're right. And what that means is they're not going to get a return on their investment, because revenue will not exceed expenditure to trickle down to their partnership share. Correct?
I have no idea.
Again. Okay, let's go to your article.
Hold on a second. I'm not sure Old National Bank's going to take a loss on an investment.
They are going to take a loss on the investment. They absolutely are. But they, of their $10 million, I met with Old National Bank, and they'll admit this. I mean, they structured a name, actually, I met with Bob Jones. And Bob Jones actually testified at the E R C that for three years, and you were there, that he had searched for an investor and could not find one.
Correct.
And so that Old National Bank...
Yeah, so, so you're making the point that they, they benefit on the upside, but yet you know they're going to lose money. So I don't know what point you're making.
I'm pointing out, you've made the same contradictory statement. You've talked about them as a corporate citizen, sort of never would we have another partner, but they do have an ownership interest, and if the project is profitable, they will see a return on their investment. If it's, but ultimately, they signed a naming rights deal with the county that's worth about $7 million, so they're really only out three in terms of an investment, right?
You know, when it comes to, I'm not going to speak to the real value of the naming rights. This is a long conversation maybe you could have with someone from the bank.
But they did sign an agreement, correct?
To pay back the county...
If for some reason the hotel isn't built, they'll pay them money for those naming rights.
That is correct, yes.
Now, you made comments in the Courier Press, it's an article, July 9. He said, "In any project, you start out with a wish list. This is what we want, and then you go in and start finding out what all this stuff is going to cost. You have to start making adjustments." And what you refer to as a wish list, I would characterize as promises. I mean, the city stood before this body with a rendering and made promises. They sold the public a vision, a transformation of that block, for a capped public investment of $20 million. 10 stories, curved glass, indoor pool. That's a wish list now?
Okay, first of all, at the time, the city believed that that's what we could accomplish with the budget that we had. Whenever we found that out, found out that we couldn't. We came, we redid the deal, second amended and restated development agreement. We brought that back here March 30th, explained what we thought we could do, okay? We explained that that original rendering was not one that was feasible, given our budget. So we came back here March 30th. That's the deal that's before you today. It remains before you. We redid the design documents in order to try to work within the budget that we have, keeping in mind that there's an economic development goal here. The economic development goal being a certain number of rooms, a certain quality, full-service hotel, so that it would be appealing to convention goers. And that's where we are today. We've achieved that goal. And so while I may apologize for calling it a wish list, the reality is, at the time, that's what we thought we could do within that budget. It turned out that that was not feasible within the budget that we were given, and therefore, we had to make adjustments.
The public subsidy, the public contribution to this adjusted dream has gone up. I mean, you're, the public is giving more for now a project that doesn't look anything like what we were promised.
You know...
I understand your frustration. I know it gets old to have to stand up here and justify more money for less. I get it, but it doesn't change the fact that that's what we're doing.
Look, there's nothing hidden. I, you know, we sent you a red line showing you every change that was in the document. There's no conspiracy here. The fact of the matter is, that's what it costs. And we feel really good about the project that we're going to be able to build down there for this money. It achieves the economic development goal that we want.
Just what waivers have been applied for on the Doubletree plan?
I don't, I don't know.
Can you find out and come back?
I will try to find that out.
Last time, there were three waivers applied for. One was the doorman was not going to be full 24/7. Another one had to do with the indoor pool and one bathroom instead of a separate men and women. I don't remember what the third one was, but I'd like to know what waivers that the developer has sought in garnering a Doubletree brand.
Well, I'll do that.
I have a question. I guess, or a statement to make. It seems like it's almost unfair to other potential developers, because we've changed the scope of the project without letting other people have an opportunity.
You know, Connie, if I, you know, when we went, started this process, you have to remember, this is the fourth go-around on this. First, they tried Browning. That didn't work. Then we tried Woodruff. That didn't work. Then we tried Kunkel. That didn't work. When we tried to solicit, request for proposal for this project, the market out there was not good. The market had been worn out with trying to deal with Evansville. The subsidy wasn't high enough, we were told.
But we didn't have a medical school coming at that time.
That's true. That's true. But, you know, subsidy wasn't high enough. You know, I think we had three or four people respond. This one was by far the best. And I think it's, once again, I think it's speculation to assume that we're going to do better if we do this again. I think our credibility throughout the Midwest and with people that can credibly put together a full-service hotel is pretty limited at this point. I think we've got a very good option here. It's not an option. It's a very good project. And you know what? We're going to be ready to close in a month.
Nick, can I?
Let me just make a little comment, if I could. You characterized this original budget as constrained. At the time, it was not constrained. We had 13 million promised by private investors, not 10, but 13. And also, we were going to put 20 in, and the difference was going to be by H C L. We brought it down from 39, because if we didn't, we wouldn't have enough funds in the TIF to have a medical school. And I begged the mayor to wait four months until we found out that where the medical school was going to go, and he, for whatever reason, decided not to do that. The original budget was not constrained, sir. It was an ample way of doing a 10-story hotel. What's evolved over the next two years has happened, and I agree. We're about to open the, we're supposed to dig dirt in the end of August, and I think we should. But I think this group of people did their job two and a half years ago, or two years ago.
Let me say, Nick, I guess what the frustration is, and that's the reason why we went out and we got H C W. They suppose they should have known of what the budget was when they proposed the 10-story building. Now, this is what really is incredible to me, that we're sitting here today on that. Because originally, they came in with $86 million on this project, okay? We were in 38 and a half, I remember it. The next thing you know, they're down to $74 million on the project. And they were going to go up there and come up with 78 apartments. Part of that makes the big footprint, gives you a good presence downtown. Now, they should have known they had the funding going on. I guess my frustrations here is this. It's like, I want you into my retail store. I'm going to try to sell you something, then find out I don't have the project, I don't have the product. I try to sell you something different, but yet the price goes up. There's where the frustrations lie in this whole deal. At least it does with me. I know, here we are today. It is what it is.
Mr. President, may I comment? May I comment?
Is there any more comments?
Yes, please.
I apologize. Go ahead.
You know, we, I mean, I don't know, I mean, let's just cut right to the bone here. We know what we're going to get for a commitment of $20 million of city money, plus the other funds from the county. We know what we're going to get right now. We can argue for days whether or not we wish we had this, or he said, she said, or it was 16.4 million, or it was 20 million, or it was 10 stories, or it was 48. I don't care anymore. I know what we will get for $20 million of city money. It's right here. There's, it's right there. Take a look at it. So we can argue about this for a couple of years, and in the meantime, delay collecting property taxes. We can delay collecting food and beverage tax. We can delay collecting innkeeper's tax. We can delay having tourists and conventioneers coming in here and spending millions of dollars. We can delay having tournaments and conventions and parties and whatever in the hotel. Why, we just sit here and let the people we hope will vote for us think we're just wonderful people, because we're complaining and we're bitching about it. We've got to decide, do we want this hotel the way it is now, and start moving off-center, developing the downtown, developing economic incentives and opportunities for people, collecting tax dollars? And if we're going to do it, let's do it. Let's shut up. Let's quit whining. Let's let these people do their jobs. Let's build a hotel. Let's build a med center, because we all believe, or we never would have voted for either of these projects in the first place, that it will drive economic development. I believe that.
Good, Councilman.
I want to start collecting the funds now.
A question, a question for you, though.
Certainly.
Yes. When we agreed, well, when we agreed nearly two years ago, do you believe that the agreement that's been presented today is the same one that we agreed to two years ago?
I kind of, I'll answer that as honestly as I can. I never had a conversation with anybody on this council, or anybody in the mayor's office, that was other than $20 million of city money. I never in my life heard $16 million, $400,000 until two months.
How did you, how did you expect the C V B to pay for their $20 million share?
That was the question that was left unanswered here. The mayor was asked, how are they going to pay that? And he kept saying something like, "That's up to them. We'll figure it out." You know, they could float a bond. It was never answered. That was their problem, to figure out how to pay it.
We were going to front the money, and they were going to pay that back into the TIF. That's how that was going to be funded. That's why the total amount was 20 million. We put that up. The county was, was and is stretched very thin on their budgets, and they didn't have it at the time, because if you remember, the center had not been refinanced.
You're telling me what I remember. I remember that I committed $20 million of city money rather than 37.
That's right.
$20 million of city money. And I believed from the bottom of my heart then, and I believe it now, that's in addition to $3.6 million in the county convention dues here.
Well, actually, Dan, we're not delaying. We don't have any vote on this thing. It's going.
But why are we doing this then?
We're not delaying. We're just trying to...
Why are we doing this? I want to know why we're doing this.
Because we want to find out the details so our, so our constituents will know.
We need to stop micromanaging.
They're right there. That's what we get, right there.
We're not stopping any shovel being stuck in the dirt. We just want the authorization.
I fear there's going to be a vote to pull the bond. Is there? Is someone talking about that? I've seen emails that deal with it.
Well, they are talking about it. And I can remember this young lady...
We shouldn't.
Coming back to us when we were committed to 17, plus what the county was putting in, and wanted to get more money out of the county. And we decided we had already, the mayor had done what we asked. He had taken it down from 44% down to 25%, and that was the good deal.
I agree it's a good deal.
Okay.
But again, I don't, I mean, I'm not going to argue with you. I can just tell you what I believed I was voting, what I believed I was voting on. So there isn't total consensus of whether it was $20 million or 16.4.
We have, we have two people that wanted to make some comments.
Sure. And I just want to say, I mean, you all know where I work and have my email. I mean, feel free to call or email anytime.
Mr. Drew Nolton?
Sir, would you give us your full name and address, please?
Absolutely. My name is Drew Nolton, and I live at 7488 Old Evansville Highway.
Great.
Awesome. A Google search on Hilton Development brings up a site that indicates the cost of a 250-room Doubletree is between 35.5 million and 59 million excluding land. The average is between 142, 142,000 to 236,000 per room, according to the site differences. According to the site, the differences are geographical, market location, and types of construction. Why is it that we are paying 217,000 per room, the high side of the established cost per room? This hotel is now considered suburban and not urban. Thus, the median cost of a Doubletree per room is $189,000. Why are we paying 6.7 million as a premium or 15%?
Maybe you want to take that on?
Thank you. This is, once again, I don't mean to defer completely, but this is sort of a Sarah Schuler question. But whenever costs of averages get brought up on this, and I have to admit, I wasn't paying really close attention to your numbers there to check your math or anything. But as Sarah says, you know, averages means that some buildings are more expensive than others. Evansville is in a seismic zone that the average hotel would not have to address. And furthermore, you know, we sought to ensure that construction workers on this project received a living wage, and there's a P L A in place. So all those things kind of go into the mix of construction costs. And Sarah could...
Yeah, Nick, if I recall, though, I think when you go five stories and down, that seismic requirement falls off. And that's, that's the point I'm trying to make here, so it's out.
Right, and that's part of the point of having to do the...
That's how construction engineers tell me that around here.
Yeah. And that, that's why, no, that's why we had to expand the footprint and, and get rid of the apartments. So, but Sarah can speak to that. I honestly am not an expert in the average room cost of a Hilton Doubletree.
She'll be back in two weeks?
She'll be back this week. If you, when's your, whenever your next meeting is...
I was going to suggest to council that if they had questions after they've absorbed this that we were given tonight, we might ask Sarah to come back in two weeks.
Yeah.
One more question.
Sure.
This is in regards to the downtown development. According to page two of the original development agreement between the city and H C W, item 10, the language clearly, clearly says, "Which TIF bonds will be issued along with other funds will generate 20 million for public funding of the public project." Why did the mayor dispute this with Councilman O'Daniel, challenging him to produce something in which, in writing, demonstrating that the public funding was capped at 20 million, when the language in the agreement clearly states the limitation?
I can't speak for the mayor.
What section were you looking at?
Nick, you got to listen here. You got to stay in the ballgame.
He's reading fast. I'm sorry.
I apologize.
Sorry, what section are you looking at?
Item 10.
Page two. Oh, it's a recital. Okay. Okay. This is fun, isn't it? Okay. Page two, item 10. Okay. You know, this, I don't know how to answer that question. It's a recital in the document which sets forth, I mean, this carried through from the beginning of the agreement. And at that time, we said the TIF bonds, plus other sources, because at that time, this language dated back to the very beginning. We weren't sure what all our sources were. I don't know the context of the argument between, or the disagreement between Connor and the mayor. But, you know, it's just part of the document that says, "TIF bonds along with other sources." And we said, "along with other funds," because we didn't know what all our sources might be. I mean, it's just a recital. And I'm sorry, I don't mean to belittle your question, but it's just a recital in the agreement.
You're welcome, sir. Rita Brown?
Nick, let me ask you a question, and I'm not sure.
Well, wait a minute. Rita's on her way up here. And then you can come after them.
Okay.
Hi.
Hello.
Hello, Rita Brown, 1301 Delaware Street.
Welcome.
Thank you. This is also concerning downtown, and if you would refer to the development agreement, page nine, under the section titled Maximum City Contribution, which states, shall mean $20 million representing the maximum amount of the public funding toward this project, why is it now 28.5 million?
Sure, there's a, there's a couple of answers to that. One, we have a med school now, so there's an additional $5 million coming from the med school bonds for the expansion of the garage to accommodate that. And then the other component is, we decide, we determined that we needed to spend the county money on the project. Previously, it hadn't been budgeted, at least in our minds, I guess maybe there's some disagreement about that. But the city money is $20 million, county money is 3.6, and then there's five, well, 4.65 million coming from the med school bonding for the expansion of the parking garage. So that's how we get to that number where we are today.
And just to clarify, one other thing, and I don't want to belabor the point, but it's also when you look at the definition of public funding originally, and how that changed in the red line between the first development agreement, second development agreement, it read really funny, because the intention, I believe, was that the county and the CVB money would be fronted by the city as part of the total $20 million. We would put up the bond, they would repay into, they would repay us over 10 years to, so we could recapture that investment. So, that's, that's part of the reason on that.
I do have another question, but not about the hotel.
Connie, you-
No, I'm sorry.
Come on, Connie.
You know, I guess I was saying, prevailing wages in Indiana is not legal anymore, how do you guarantee that with the, with your PLA?
Well, we have a PLA, so that's a, that's a negotiated document between the general contractor and the local unions. And so, I would sure hope that the local unions are doing their job in representing their constituency and negotiating a, a good living wage for them.
Then I noticed something else, and I don't have the document in front of me, and maybe you do. It was concerning minority and women-owned companies, and there was a line in there that I was uncomfortable with, because I didn't, I don't see that you have a true commitment to it.
Yeah, this language is similar to the language that, in fact, we, I copied it verbatim, I believe, with what we had with the Ford Center, and-
No, because I think, I think the line in there, I wish I had it with me, I don't know who has it, but it gives H C W an out.
Um, you know, it's-
You know, it doesn't give, it is more concrete with the PLA, but as far as women and minority-owned businesses-
Right.
It gives H C W an out.
And I think our ordinances are targets, and, and we adopted the language from the Ford Center agreement.
And-
And so far, as far as, you know, I know, H C W's contracted with Talmage Vic, I believe, to assist with that process.
No, he doesn't, he doesn't have a contract with H C W, to my knowledge.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, it was with Killian, that's right. And so-
And the 20, then I've had minority and women-owned companies tell me that they've been informed that the participation only occurs with a garage. They're not, they're, you don't have a participation goal with a hotel, but only with a garage.
But it's only in a public investment, that, that's a public investment.
Yeah, so the private, so H C W is not committed privately.
I'm not sure that's the intent, let me, can I follow up on that and get back with you?
Yeah, so you have all these women-owned and minority-owned companies that think they're going to get a piece of the deal, and all they're going to get is a piece of the garage, not a piece of the hotel.
Right, I, I don't know that that's the case, I'll check in-
That are taxpayers.
Yeah, I'll check into that for you, I don't know if that's the case. Second of all, I would point out that-
I think, Mr.-
Shaffer probably can tell you, because I think they met with the, met at the mayor's office, and he told them it would be the garage. Because that's the public funding, and the hotel is private funding.
Steve Shaffer, Chief of Staff for the mayor. I'll check on that for you, I do know that the mayor did have a, a meeting last week with Talmage, he organized a group that, that met with him, because this was the topic of, of their discussion, so I, I don't know the, the results of it. I, I just do remember back, let me check the-
Because, I mean, if we're giving H C W, if we're helping them as a private company, and they're not committed to equal opportunity with minorities and women-owned companies, you know, I think that's just horrible.
Well, I, I think that, as, as the mayor probably has committed before, he, he would agree with you that it's important, and, and he made the commitment, just as he did with the unions, that, that, that he would make sure that that participation was there. So, I'll, I'll follow up, and we'll get back to you, I'll, I'll have the mayor reach out to you personally, because I think it is an important question.
Why don't you reach out to all of us?
Do what?
Why don't you reach out to all of us, because I think we're all concerned.
About what? What specific?
Women, work.
Oh, okay, sure. You want, you want him to do it by email?
Sure.
Okay, we'll do.
Yeah, that's not happening.
And Connie, I'm looking at the language, and it does say hotel and ancillary construction components, so it should be the whole project.
Okay, any other comments?
Yes, I'm sorry, I've been trying to speak for a long time and haven't been able to. I just want to say I concur with Councilman McGinn. It, you know, back when we started all this, I remember seeing signs that said, we can do both. Well, you know what, now we have a great opportunity to get this going and do both. I know that the, the unions are very happy and, and would love to have both these projects going, along with other people in the community. It's going to bring jobs, it's going to bring property tax revenue, and, you know, I actually looked at the blueprints, I went to the E R C meeting, Kelly Kors has them available at D M D. It is a very nice hotel, and I'm, I'm ready to see it happen.
I will make a comment, the reason we can do both is because this group went to the mat saying, you can't do it at the price you started at. Yeah, I know you do, okay. Anybody else want to talk about this? Do you want to talk about this particular subject? Go for it.
It's going to be very short for the city.
Miraculous.
Randy Jones, 915 Oak Hill Road. I went through seven meetings where the mayor had, and I saw this beautiful hotel complex and all that. And the reason this came up to me, because I'm getting, and this is a little offside, but I'm getting an air conditioning unit put in my house. I'm getting agreements on what I want put in there. If that guy comes up to me and says, well, you know, I'm just going to put a one ton, you're going to pay the same amount of money, I'm getting ripped off. H C W was told, we were told, they build hotels all over the United States. They know what they're doing. Shouldn't they have known how much this project was before it started? Shouldn't they have had this agreement beforehand? And when you voted, you voted on this hotel project, you voted on this part, you voted, you didn't vote on this thing we're getting now, outside pools, window air conditioners. We're not even, we're not even, we're not even guaranteed it's going to be a DoubleTree. It might be a DoubleTree, but we're not even guaranteed that yet, because they haven't agreed to that yet.
I have to correct you on something, I saw the blueprints, there are no window air conditioners, and that is completely false and ridiculous.
But we're getting the tire and everything, so you want to, you want to argue, okay, all right, I'm mistaken, I'm sorry, I made a mistake, I was totally different.
I'm being factual. He had, Kelly has the blueprints, you can go to his office at any point in time and see them. I took the time.
We're not getting what we got for 20 minutes.
Well, they're called V-tax, they're called V-Tax, not Central Air, but-
Huh?
They're called V-Tax instead of Central Air.
They are by room, you are, I mean, it's not a central air conditioning system, it is a room unit, although it'd be tucked away in a little closet. The issue is that it, it won't have a central-
It won't have a central.
HVAC system, and it will vent it out.
I stated a DoubleTree, I, I can't imagine DoubleTree giving this, but they may, I'm just saying, but we're not even guaranteed that yet. We were sold a bill of goods, and we're getting a lot less than what we were sold. And if I was, if, if it was my home, H C W would have been fired the first time that they said, well, you know, we can't do that, we, we promised it, they would have been fired that day. If that guy comes in with an air conditioning unit that's not what I asked for, he'll be fired that day, he will not be putting that unit in. But of course, it's not taxpayer money, I don't have unlimited funds. Thank you.
Well, I guess, Randy, in reference to that, I'd like to make, it's like, Kelly, I don't think if I, if I was to apply for home money, and I ask you for a grant to build three houses, you give me the grant, and then I decide I want to build three dog houses.
That was considered a partnership fund.
Yeah, so I don't build three houses, instead of three houses, I build three dog houses.
I, I think we all get your point, but I don't think, we're not building a dog house here.
The project has just changed, so, you know, from a, out, indoor swimming pool to outdoor swimming pool, from a rooftop restaurant-
Yeah, it has.
It's just, the product, the project has changed.
And, and as, as you may recall, the project, the original project that we had, there, there was an announcement, the, the mayor was there, Bob Jones was there, that deal was dead. That deal was dead. And then, excuse me-
That took a couple of years, didn't it?
It took a couple of years?
For us to hear that.
You heard, you heard it with everybody else?
No, no.
That the deal was dead?
The deal was dead, the deal was dead when you guys realized that the, how much the center's worth was less than they thought it was. And that was about two years after the original thing. We heard the deal was dead then, not before that. How long ago was it?
Wait, what?
It was December when the deal was dead.
Yeah.
September of 13.
Yeah, because the bids came back in the numbers, and it didn't fit the budget. But what I'm saying is, is the original design was, was not going to move forward. That deal was dead. There was then a period of time in negotiations, the mayor came in March and presented the new proposal in front of this body, there were public meetings. So, I mean, there's two different projects here. There was the original, and then, then there was the new project that was presented here by the mayor in March. So I'm not really sure, because all of you were given the revised development agreement with all of these changes. So, why the questions now?
It's not now, these are the, frankly, these are the, some of the same questions we asked back then.
Exactly, and I actually looked at the minutes from the March meeting, and the mayor-
Just not a satisfactory response.
The mayor explained a lot of these answers when he was here, and-
You have to wait until everything's been through, right?
What do you mean?
Till, till we got the blueprints, and till we got the bids. There were a lot of unanswered questions.
We had to wait until the things were going to state before we could actually see the plans.
The mayor and the administration saw the blueprints like a day before you did.
Well, if you remember correctly, when he appeared-
In March.
There was no drawing at that time, and President Adams asked that he and Councilman O'Daniel be involved in the process going forward. And that didn't happen, and so, when the rendering came out, and the things had changed so much, I think there's a, I don't know, it's an undercurrent, I mean, there's just-
I believe you're incorrect on that.
And the rendering is consistent with the, the document. I mean, it, it is consistent with what we negotiated and presented to council on March 30th. I mean, you can't say that that's not what's presented in the document, because that's what you think you just said.
In terms of a five-story structure?
Yes.
I think there's a bit, well, look, I mean, the image is everything, right? I mean, you sold us the bond on an image, and then you presented a new image that's, that's distinctly different.
Okay, well, the, the agreement specified what it would look like. I mean, that's how we had to try to get within budget, okay?
And actually, you never gave us a development agreement, we actually were given that by an E R C member, I believe after the fact. It wasn't until you appeared thereafter-
On March 30th.
-that we actually went through it, line by line, but-
I mean, it got negotiated, when I, it got negotiated right up until we presented it. I mean, there was a lot that went into it. And so it's not as though, I mean, the implication there, and what you just said, is that we negotiated some agreement and didn't present it in a timely fashion. The date, my date stamp on that in my computer system is, we, I was finalizing language on that up until it was presented publicly. So, I, I sent, we sent a cumulative red line showing all of the changes, so that way, although this was a new deal, you didn't have to go through line by line and try to figure out how it had changed. So, we presented that in as clear a fashion as I know how to do. And furthermore, those renderings there are representative of what that agreement says. And any assertion of the contrary is just wrong.
Okay, so, so, we voted on the first project, or fourth project, depending on how you view it, right? The 10-story, we voted on that to allocate the 20 million. That deal's done, new development agreement comes forth, we've not voted on that. There's never been a vote by this body on that, on that deal at all, correct?
You-
We've never had a vote on it.
The language on the ordinance said, allocates $20 million toward a hotel project.
Yeah, but not that hotel, because that deal was dead. So now we have a new project.
That, that deal was amended.
Can you quit, John? Yeah.
Anyway, I will be available for questions, Sarah can be available at the next meeting.
When she comes back from California.
When she comes back from California, which is this week, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, please, council, please let me know if you want, you want-
Thanks, Nick.
If you want Sarah to come join us a couple of weeks, or two, three weeks from now. Okay, all right, we've discussed that. We're now going to open up the Pandora's Box and talk a little bit about the fireworks. We have a couple of people that want to talk on that. Let me say, at the outset, this body really tried very, very hard last year to push the state legislature that controls the fireworks regulations, to get them to give us home rule on this situation. We also asked them to take the nine days and try to get it down to three or four. I think it went to the committee up in the state legislature, but didn't go any further. I asked members of council if they wanted to talk about fireworks again, because we all got lots of calls about the length and the intensity of the fireworks, and how people were upset about it. I personally would love, even though our, our resolution didn't fall on, but fell on deaf ears last year, I would love to send another resolution to the state legislature, perhaps even the same verbiage, saying, you know, try two, and see if we can get it out of committee. But having said that, I will entertain any comments that people would like to talk, yes, please.
I just, I went to a couple of fireworks stores, just to, just to nose around and, you know, see what's going on. And when I ask questions about, you know, when can I shoot these off, what's ordinance, everywhere I went, no one seemed to know. And, you know, I think it should also be that the people selling the fireworks, they, they should either have to have the ordinance posted, or some type of reference so that people know. I mean, you know, some of these people may not know.
But people don't, oh, I'm sorry.
Pardon me?
But people aren't going to listen anyway, that's the problem.
But I get that, but, you know, at least it would be posted, people would know, the workers should be aware of what that ordinance is.
I think that's a great idea, I'm not sure we even have the ability to do that.
Or even ask the state, ask the state if they could look at that.
I think that's a wonderful idea, I absolutely agree that it should be required, whether this body can require that. I don't know whether that's preempted by state statute or not, by looking.
Thank you.
I mean, I think we're frustrated how shackled we are-
I know.
-about addressing a problem that people really are angry about.
But I do think there's a lot of confusion, because we have a state law, and then the county, the state does it one way, the county does it a different way, and then the city of Evansville does it their way. And I seriously doubt that many people out there are actually educated as to what the local municipal, municipal law is on fireworks. But I'll research that and report back.
If we're more liberal than the state statute, we sure ought to comply with the state statute, it's more restrictive.
No, we're not, we're much more restrictive.
No, we're more liberal than the state statute. We go to 11:30, the state statute requires two hours after sunset, so arguably 10:15-ish, at least the police would have a basis to stop people. The current ordinance says 11:30. We also allow fireworks Labor Day, Memorial Day, Veterans Day, and the day before, that's not required by the state statute. That's not required by the state statute. We have to do the 10 days, we have to start at 5:00 p.m. on June 29th through July 9th, except for July 4th, which apparently people can start at 10:00 a.m. And then it's two hours after sunset. And I had a couple of ladies that contacted me, one is 78 years old, she couldn't be here, Elaine Kuhn, and I think we all got contacted by Teresa Roy, who was not able to come here. And they talked about the late night issues more and more. And also, that, that state statute is, is not particularly new, but yet fireworks have changed. And so, like, the night that I sort of angrily said, "We've got to change this," and it was 11, I mean, it was 10:30, you know, and they, they're like cannons. I mean, what they're selling as consumer fireworks are so much more. I mean, they, it is, I don't know what it's like to live into the war zone, I'm not going to pretend like 10 days of nightly fireworks is a war zone, but it is, it is bad. It is bad for people with pets that are sensitive. I have small children that, you know, it's 10 o'clock on a Wednesday night and they're going off. I think that we could amend our ordinance to be more restrictive, and I think we should consider it. I understand a certain number of people will not pay attention at all, and they will still be shooting them off at 2:00 a.m. But if we coupled, you know, the two hours after sunset with an obligation that it be posted, where people purchase it, that might help.
But we also have a situation, and, I mean, look, our police officers are busy enough dealing with other crime. I mean, there, there are no ordinance violations being written for any of these. I mean, it's just, it, it's non-existent. So, you know, we could sit there and feel good about ourselves and file a more restrictive timeframe, but the people who are shooting these off at 2:00 in the morning, they don't care.
Yeah, so, let's do it, because it won't matter anyway, but at least some of us will feel better.
Well, if I may, our ordinance is much more restrictive than the state statute, in the sense that by state law, you can ignite fireworks 365 days a year until 11:00 p.m., except for on holidays, and then you can do it until midnight. And the state identifies 13 or 14 holidays, but the state also says that Sundays are holidays, so you have over 60 holidays, you can ignite them until midnight. So, what the city council did is, the statute allows us to be more restrictive throughout the year, with the exception of these 10 days that Councilwoman Brinkerhoff Riley spoke about. And it says that the, that the council cannot be any more or less restrictive than, than what the statute allows, and the statute does indicate during those, between July 29th, or June 29th and July 9th, it's 5:00 p.m. until two hours after sunset, except for on July 4th, it extends till midnight. And I don't know, I wasn't here, but I think that what the city council did is, in an attempt to comply with the statute and to mirror the statute, they estimated that two hours after sunset would be 11:30 p.m. So the statute says from 5:00 to 11:30 p.m. But it also lets the public, no, and more particularly, law enforcement, what two hours after sunset is, because it literally changes just about every day, the actual time of sunset. And so I think that, and there might have been some confusion between sunset and darkness. Most people don't start lighting these things off until it gets dark, and maybe there's a thought that they should have a couple of hours to ignite them. But I do think that we could tweak roughly 10 days so that it reads like the state statute, two hours after sunset, that frankly, I don't think anybody's going to know what that means. And, and you're going to ask law enforcement to somehow check the sunset tables and the people that are lighting these things off, so, but I do, what I do think that we could safely do, and I don't think that this would be printed by statute, is we could word it that way, that it's for two hours after sunset, but in no case after 10:30 p.m. Because I did check the sunset tables, and they're never past 8:20 p.m. So, if we say 8:30, two hours past 8:30 is 10:30, so we can say two hours after sunset, but in no event past 10:30 p.m. I think that's consistent with the statute. And that will, but again, I, I think the bigger problem is, to keep in mind, council members, that'll give people about one hour to go, if they want to wait till it's dark, you're going to give them about one hour to take care of their business lighting these things off. I think the bigger problem is what the other council, the council members have indicated, it's the size of, they truly are like cannons. And, and I know they get complaints all the time, that they feel like they're in a war zone, windows are vibrating, that kind of thing. And, and I experienced it myself, and it truly is a problem, the type of fireworks that are permitted, probably more so than the times. And, but anyway, we can, we can restrict those 10 days, but otherwise, generally speaking, our ordinance is much, much more restrictive than state statute. Our ordinance also has a couple holidays that we're not required to do, that we do Memorial Day and Veterans Day. And I think the majority of the councils would like to keep that, council members would like to keep those dates in there.
Are you sure of that?
That we can shave off possibly one hour during 10 days out of the year.
I, I would ask the council to go to their hearts and figure out whether we really do want to have it Memorial Day and Veterans Day. I mean, I think, I think we're, we're coming to the point where we're, we're being abused by this.
Can any of us speak in the audience, please?
I'm sorry?
Can any of us in the audience speak to this, what we experience in our neighborhood?
He's going to open that up in a moment. Also, I left out, New Year's, New Year's Eve, they're allowed to.
Sure. Why don't we, why don't we take the comments, because it is getting late, if you don't mind? Stan Wheeler was first.
Stan Wheeler, 3800 Keck Avenue. I've got a little dog that, if you shoot a firecracker, my, my dog goes crazy, my paint's gone off of my back door, the gasket's chewed out of the back door, because people don't abide by the law. There's no need to have any kind of fireworks law in this town, in this state, because nobody enforces it. If you would at least enforce it, then maybe some people would think twice about doing it. I don't go down to the river to watch the fireworks anymore. I've got a guy that lives a block from me on the next street over, and he puts on a better fireworks demonstration than what's on down at the riverfront. And I literally have to wrap my dog in a towel and give it Benadryl on, on the nights that he shoots it. And I don't know when he's going to do this. And I can go to sleep at night, and all of a sudden, the fireworks goes off, and my dog's out of the garage and ain't scratching on my back door, trying to get in the house because she's scared to death. I know Randy, he's a vet, and thank him for his service, and he likes fireworks, but there are a lot of vets that, that don't like fireworks, that are in the same boat, and, and they just do not have them either, because they're gun shy. But, you know, it's, if, if you're going to write all these laws and stuff, that's fine, but you got to enforce it if you're going to put them on the books. If you're not going to enforce them, if we got state laws, I don't know that any state police has written a ticket for fireworks violations. I don't know that the sheriff has, and I don't know that the city police have. Maybe you can tell us, has anybody ever wrote a citation for fireworks violation? I, I don't know of anybody that's ever said that, that they've got a ticket. So, if you're going to write a law, why write it if nobody's going to enforce it? It's, it's a waste of paper. Thank you.
Robin Church. Thank you for being so patient. I'm sorry to keep you here so long.
This was so entertaining. I had never been to a city council meeting.
State your name.
Reality TV, Evansville, Indiana. My name is Robin Church. I live at 2054 Vogel Road.
Thank you.
And, um, thank you for everything you guys do. This is quite a job. I had no idea. The paper doesn't do it justice. Anyway, after living in, can I read this?
Sure.
Because I'm not really good at extemporaneous speaking. After living in the Historic Preservation District from 98 to 2006, and then in the Haney's Corner Arts District, until I moved to a quiet east side neighborhood in Marcha this year, I looked forward to a somewhat calmer Fourth of July celebration, after years of enduring all the traffic, people, and noise the amazing and wonderful downtown fireworks display brings. Imagine my shock and surprise when the peaceful area around my home turned into a veritable war zone for 10 days. And I'm not kidding. Then imagine the further shock and surprise when I finally called 9/11 late on the evening of Sunday the 5th, and was told by the dispatcher there was nothing they could do about the almost non-stop fireworks so loud they were rattling my windows, the sparks and debris were landing on my roof, and the air was so thick, thick with smoke, it was burning my eyes and lungs because, quote, "It's all perfectly legal between July, or June 29th and July 9th until 11:30 at night." And if the police come out and stop them, they'll just start up again after they leave. When I spoke to Councilman Adams, he told me he had tried to get this policy changed last year, but it didn't even get out of the state level committee. Then I read in the Courier this morning, which now that Scott Danks has told me that's not true, that there was an expanded policy that we were much more liberal than the state, so that's going to come, kind of come off of that. We are not more liberal than the state, I guess. But however, we still, according to the article in the paper, there's a total of 17 nights of inescapable sensory pollution in Evansville, Indiana. And there truly is no escape. I couldn't be outside in my yard because of smoke from the fireworks only a few of my neighbors were setting off, not only caused my eyes and lungs to burn, they also caused fine particle pollution to reach almost four times the national clean air standard on July 4th and 5th, according to the Indiana Department of Environmental Management. What a true lung and health problem for anyone, not just all of us with pre-existing conditions. And forget going inside for peace and quiet, much less any sleep, when your windows are constantly rattling. When I asked Dr. Adams about our local noise pollution ordinance, he said that was only for continual noise, not intermittent noise. I wouldn't call almost non-stop fireworks from noon on the 4th until after midnight on the 5th intermittent, as well as on every other permissible night from at least 9:00 till almost midnight. The irony here is that for those who have fought to keep our country free and safe and develop post-traumatic stress disorder as a result, this time of the year is a pure torture. And for many of our pets, it's a nightmare as well. My question is, why isn't each municipality in Indiana able to decide for themselves about the fireworks issue? And why did Evansville decide to expand, which that's a moot point, so I won't go into that, we didn't expand? I have to ask myself, who else would enjoy this time of year, other than the fireworks industry, who are making tons of money at the expense of Hoosiers' mental and physical health? I ask Evansville County Council, City Council, Common Council to do something to protect us from being held hostage by fireworks mania. It's not nearly enough to comply with a state two hours after sundown curfew. There is no reason, especially in a city with a wonderful free fireworks display, to allow severe noise and air pollution for more than a couple of days. Please take this issue back to Indianapolis, so we're not held hostage anymore. That's all I have to say. And, again, I mean, it's, it's not just what you said, it's not just the hours, it's the quality, the intensity. I mean, the people behind me had tag team fireworks going on, the people across the street, I was surrounded by things as big as over the river and that loud, "Buh, buh, 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 boom!", and you never know when it's going to go off. The people setting them off, no, but when you're sitting in your yard trying to weed a garden, all of a sudden, there's a boom out of nowhere, I mean, I'm telling you, I don't know if any of y'all experienced, this is one of the worst experiences in my entire life, and I've lived here my entire life. So, thank you, Dan, for trying it last year, please, please try again. I speak for lots of people who couldn't be here. This is a really, really, really bad situation.
Robin, I didn't, I didn't do that alone, my colleagues joined.
And all of you.
We all worked on that together.
And I appreciate all of you.
And I think we all need to work on that together.
Yeah, because it's getting worse, and the people, I was going to talk to them about it, so I drove my car over, thinking, maybe they'll listen to reason.
Yeah.
Big balutes with their six-pack and their big dogs, I'm going, oh my God, and there's fireworks lined up on, on the sidewalk, in the street, and they gave me dirty looks for driving down the street, because they had to move their fireworks out of the street. So, please help us. And I also agree, if the police on occasion would write a citation, if, that would get out. But right now, everyone knows this cart launch, we can do whatever we want to, and no one's going to do a dag-on thing.
I'm told that, um, non-adults, kids without parental supervision can get a ticket written, I'm not sure, Mr. Officer, not whether this is true, but I've heard this, and they get their fireworks confiscated.
These weren't children, I could understand children being that idiotic, these were grown adults with their beers, and they needed to have their toys taken away. That's all I have to say.
What I, what I hear from our colleagues tonight is that we would like to think about posting a fireworks law, and, I'll be with you a second, maybe attacking the 10 days, limiting the strength of power, and perhaps discontinue the other holidays. I want you all to think about that, we could, you have, you want to, you want to say something up, sorry, Dan.
While, while she's coming up, could we, could we ask Representative of the Police Department to come to a meeting and tell us really what they do? I mean, there's a lot of non-information or misinformation.
Sure.
If we could find out what they, I'm sure they've responded to complaints.
Yeah, I'm sure.
I've been, I've been told that they've responded.
And if I'm not mistaken, a few years ago, we had, you know, real drought situations, and there was no fireworks during this July 4th period of time. And actually, I think it was suggested that we move it all to Labor Day, and I think that's what happened. Either Labor Day, or perhaps it was Veterans Day.
Veterans Day.
Even further out, so, I mean...
Yeah, that was the summer of 2012, because they got canceled. But, you know, the ordinance does say that you can't set them off on anything but your own property, and that is clearly what's not followed. I mean, every, in my neighborhood, it's, it's on the sidewalk, it's in the street, and I think those are easy violations to, to write up, but it's probably the sheer volume in terms of the police department.
Name and address, please.
I do not have my name in, but it's Carolyn Stagg at 700 Rylander. I'm the president of United Neighborhoods of Evansville. But one thing that has not been brought up was the cleanup afterwards. I helped clean up. I cleaned up the Civic Center parking lot on Sunday after. We got seven bags of large items. Now, I know that the sheriff come through with their inmates that were cleaning up, and they asked me where else to go, and I directed them to another couple of parks. They also got several bags, so, it's on my property at home, it's on everybody's property, I'm sure. But to have these large public parking lots covered with crap, that the, the, we have to clean it up, hand clean it up, because the, uh, the machines can't clean this up.
Thank you.
So that's another aspect that has not even been addressed.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I found it on the greenway. They were out on the greenway setting them off.
Every school parking lot?
Every church, that was one of, Ms. Kuhn was, her church is primarily elderly people, and when they went to church on Sunday, their parking lot was full. It was Keep Evansville Beautiful people that actually cleaned it up for them.
I will send you a, a copy of what I think I've gleaned that, that your, your complaints or your interests are, we can all put, put some input, we can have the police come and talk to us and give us advice. Perhaps they can give us some advice about what was going on. Sure, why not? We have two more people that want to talk about other subjects, but go ahead. I'm not sure they're still here, but hopefully they are.
First, I'd like to address the notice on the fireworks laws. If you came into the fireworks store, I won't plug it, but if you came into the fireworks store I help with, we have it posted on the wall, what the regulations are. We always had. You have to be 18 years old and show me an ID. I will not let you buy fireworks unless you're 18 years old, and you show me an ID. Now, as far...
How many colleagues do that?
I don't know, they should be, and they should be required to, and I think that's a good ordinance. I think that's one ordinance you all should enforce. As far as the law goes, as far as fireworks goes, the only thing that's actually regulated in the state of Indiana is the stuff that goes up in the air and goes boom. I can put fountains in front of my yard and shoot them all day long. There is no reg, in fact, they're exempt. Noisemakers, fountains that pop, crackle, that's all exempt. I, he, Mr. Danks, you may correct me on that, but I, that's the way I read it, anyway. We've got the laws posted, we keep them posted. Anyone that's doing any fireworks anywhere, except on their property, is in violation of the law, and should be arrested, should be, or not arrested, but should be cited. And I'm a fireworks person, I sell fireworks, I put on fireworks shows, I put on professional bigger-than-the-river down here. But when you get into the regulations, let's make the regulations for everyone. So when you put that law in there and you say, okay, we're only going to have fireworks a certain day, Bossy Field can't have fireworks anymore, because it's only certain days. Oh, I know they're commercial, but I guarantee you, I'm on Oak Hill Road, and they rattle my teeth. So when you start regulating fireworks, let's make sure, let's don't make it another smoking law, where, you know, this guy can, but this guy can't. Let's just eliminate it over everybody. Or, I see all kinds of things where you call it wine on the streets, wine at the thing, I call it get drunk at the zoo, get drunk at the whatever, because I don't drink. Maybe we could have some days for fireworks and set off a location that people can do that, too. I mean, there is compromise, but the people that violate the law are the ones that are causing the problem, not the people that actually go by it. I have a site that I shoot at, uh, if I have to shoot a commercial, I have to pull a permit for it. The cleanup part of it, that's disgraceful, I, you know, I, I don't understand that. I know a person that does use a church, they do get permission, and in the morning, I guarantee you, that part, that church is just absolutely spotless, they blow it off. So, yeah, there's a lot of people it's not going to do, you know, it's just like a guy that... You know, it's just like a guy that gets drunk at the zoo, he's gonna go home and he might have a wreck, you know, I mean, I'm sorry, but you got, we're gonna give him taxicab, there's no difference in that, there's no difference in anything. Everybody's gonna break the rules. As far as fireworks goes, yeah, there's veterans, there's dogs that get upset over fireworks. I can guarantee you right now, I am not a person that gets too excited about anything, but I've seen what those jets, those Blue Angels can do under combat, and I've seen meopon bop in front of me, and I've seen people burned to death. Let me tell you what, I don't go to the river when them jets fly over. My cats run. So, let's just ban that, too, because that's gonna interfere with a lot of vets and make people upset. Let's just ban anything that bothers somebody. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any more comments about this? Well, I'll give you, we can revisit this at another time. Mary Simpson would like to talk about the EPA consent decree and blight issues, is she still here?
I'm just gonna do my second question.
Yeah, well, that's a different issue, yeah.
Yeah.
It is 8:30, but that's okay.
All right.
Mary Simpson, address?
No, it's Rita Brown, 1301. I told you earlier that I had a second question, and it didn't have to do with the hotel.
Sure.
Anyway...
Can you make it real short?
Yes.
Because we're letting you get up twice now.
Right.
And that's not usually our policy for on the same subject. I thought you were coming up, I thought you were Mary Simpson.
It's not about the hotel.
Okay.
That's why I'm here a second time, because I didn't want to bring up some...
Are you Mary Simpson?
No.
She's Mary Brown.
Rita Brown.
Is Mary Simpson...
This is Rita Brown.
Okay. Okay. I apologize, Ms. Simpson, you're next. Okay, go.
My apologies. Why did the DMD purchase nearly $1 million of properties up North Main Street without the knowledge of the City Council, and where did this money come from? And even before the council's taken up the funding of the North Main Street project?
Do you want to handle that? It's the Evansville Redevelopment Commission.
When we started putting together the North Main Complete Street Project, well, I wanna, she's leaving. I'm answering your question. Oh, okay. We realized...
He's trying to claim that, he has to stand up, you should, too.
We realized, yeah, yeah. We realized with the protected bike path that separating by a median on the street, that we were gonna lose some on-street parking on one side of North Main. So, the Redevelopment Commission approved the purchase of four properties along the commercial section of North Main, so that we could have public parking on those parcels to replace the parking that will be lost on North Main when the complete street is finished. The Redevelopment Commission approved that, and the funds came from the Jacobsville Tiff. Does that answer your question? Okay.
Okay, Mary Simpson, patient, wonderful woman. Can you make Kelly Curris get up for us, again?
Hello, my name is Mary Simpson, I live at 5033 Great Lakes Drive South. My question, one of two, I say, when the public, when will the public hear the status of the EPA consent, consent decree, I can't read, took too long, consent decree in regards to the CSO? The last we heard was $540 million, but rumors indicate nearly $700 million, preferably in council chambers.
City lawyer, want to handle that? It comes out of the utility. You're on your own.
Steve Schaefer, apologize, Alan Mount's already stepped out. I asked him, when they were doing the presentation on the clear and clear the path, presentation on the easements, I asked Alan, because he had had some conversations, we're still in negotiations with the EPA, they're having continual technical discussions with staff at the EPA, so we're still hopeful we're coming to a resolution soon, but we're trying to get the best deal for the city.
But at this juncture, you can't give her a hard number, a hard date?
No, no, I can't, sorry.
Steve, if I may, on this, too, aren't there several hundred other cities also negotiating with the EPA on their CSO consent decrees?
Yes.
I mean, that's why we don't get answers right away, I mean, I think we should know that.
Pittsburgh's something like up to $2.8 billion.
Yeah, but there are hundreds of cities doing the same thing we're doing, that's why these answers take a while.
Okay, we understand that some officials from the city have been studying the blight issues in our city. What are the anticipated plans of action? When will it be implemented, if any, and at what cost, and where will this, the source of funding come from?
Part of it, I will say this, though, part of this is that it should be in the budget as well, because some blight elimination money is, has to be budgeted, we can only cut, so we can't add to anything. So, we'll find out here a month what the proposal is.
We are preparing an extensive document, which will show the cost to taxpayers of doing nothing, of leaving approximately 1,800 blighted structures standing in our neighborhoods. We'll show you the cost for police runs, fire runs, fires, we'll show you the cost of doing nothing. Remember, it's a finite problem, we have to eliminate about 1,800 blighted structures in the community. You can't do it all at once. So, what I'm going to ask in this 2016 budget is approximately $2 million to expand the Brownfield Corporation, which is a city-managed not-for-profit, into a full-fledged land bank, where we can take the first group of, I can't think, 161...
161 properties.
Right, that were not sold at the tax sale in 13 and 14, which we can acquire for hardly anything. Demolish those, clear those lots, and then the next group will be the seal and secure that the building commission has already flagged for demolition, see if we can demolish those right away. So, it's a progression, but remember, it's a finite problem, it's like a snake trying to swallow a mouse. The snake swallows them, it's big going through until it digests, but those funds will come from...
There's no way of, like, putting those buildings maybe into better repair and using for maybe the homeless, or something to that...
Well, the homeless are who's burning them down. But the part of the plan is to evaluate, the building commission, the building commission will evaluate the ones coming off the tax sale that can be rehabbed. Are you familiar with Community One? Community One is an offshoot of Crossroads Christian Church, who rehabs and does repair of homes for income-qualified people. So, the plan is to do an evaluation in three grades, where it must be demolished, should be demolished, can be repaired with very little effort and minimal input, minimal financial input, and then those would be the ones that would then would be marketed to people who could renovate them and live in them and make them a home. But you can't, you can't put $100,000 into a house that may only be worth 50 when you're done with it.
But, I mean, wouldn't there be some kind of funds that could be put in place for some renovation, if some though, that could be renovated?
Well, we fund, we fund Memorial Community Development Corporation's emergency home repair for $180,000 a year, which last year enabled over 50 low-income persons to maintain their homes as homeowners. And then we have, Connie wants me to build dog houses with our home dollars now, but we try and build as many homes as we can with our federal allocation.
I'll be nice, Kelly.
I'm just kidding.
We found 41, I mean, when the...
There's 41, in this first group, there are 41 that we think could be rehabbed, it's finding the people with the resources to do it.
I mean, if there's people out there that can fund thousands and thousands of dollars in these fireworks, couldn't they be putting those, their money into better, better...
I doubt they put that much money in their funds.
I heard there was one person in particular, just down the street from me, that put $2,000 into just fireworks. I mean, talk about waste. It's, I mean, why, can't we get some kind of...
Did I answer your question? Oh, sorry. Right. No, you can't.
You can leave.
Okay, I think we have, I think we have one more person at least to hear from, it's Takora Clark, is she here? Great.
I think that whoever lives in her neighborhood also...
Ms. Clark wants to talk on the DMD lead paint issue.
I have three questions.
The what?
Okay, the first one is that, my name's Takora Clark, 2601 Opbridge Court. The first one is that I live in the inner city, and I have a small child, and I understand the council wants to consider decreasing the lead paint that we encounter in our older structures. What is the status of the amendment in regards to decreasing those lead levels?
What is the status of the amendment that does what?
In regards to decreasing those lead levels.
You recall, Doctor, we did draft a new...
Yes, we did.
...lead ordinance. There is, and we essentially adopted it in Indiana, which did reduce the acceptable levels of lead poisoning.
Well, we got pushback, we got pushback from some people that did not want to bring the lead level down to a lower point that is necessary by what science tells us, and eventually, the Bennebilly County Health Department dropped it and assumed the state regulation, which they can do, which actually is more prohibitive than what we were asking for.
All right, I have a second question, and that's, the Integra Building on North...
Excuse me, if you have a question, I would, I would contact the Health Department. They're very good at coming up and helping you with that problem.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
The Integra Building on North Main Street was purchased by the owner of Toroni's for additional parking for his restaurant, and ironically, the Department of Metropolitan Development came into the picture and purchased from him, giving him approximately $55,000 profit on this short-term transaction. Now, the city owns it and allows his patrons to park on the property. Why would this council not know about this, and why would they, why would the DMD waste taxpayers' money?
Kelly, would you get up and tell us why you're...
I thought you left.
I'm on my way, I'm on, thank God I didn't leave. The answer is, the answer to that question is the same answer I gave the other young lady. When we realized we were losing on-street parking on one side of North Main with the complete street, we acquired four parcels, and Jerry graciously sold that to us to maintain this public parking. And we paid the average of two appraisals, which is what's required by law, for the Redevelopment Commission, thank God we have Stan, you were on there, approved spending the Jacobsville Tiff to acquire those four properties, because if we don't own it, it can't be public parking.
Yeah, but she makes a good point, he made $55,000 after two years, and he still gets to use it. And if you drive over there on him just about any given evening, it's consumed, and it'll be even more so with the loss of the parking in front of his building, so...
We hope so.
My point is that there really won't be any room for public parking. He already uses it.
If they get there first, they will. That public parking is just that, you get there first, it's public parking. If he owns it, it's not public.
Yeah, but it wasn't patrolled or enforced to begin with, so, I mean, he's, he laughed his way to the bank on that one.
If we don't own it, it's not public.
Well, he could've bought it for steel.
Well, let me ask you a question, Kelly, so where are they coming from, or where are they going to park it? The, you know, customers are, I mean, Toroni's already, Toroni's customers are already parking there, so what additional customers are gonna park there?
Well, when we're hoping, we're anticipating new business will open up on North Main when the complete, did you read the economic development?
Yeah, but I'm thinking of those two blocks, those two blocks, I'm thinking, where, you know, where are they coming from? Subway's, people that go to Subway, they're gonna park down there?
Subway's building a new, Subway's building a new building on the Notty Pond. See, the Notty Pond, someone said the Notty Pond was demolished by the city, and that's not true, it was...
So, Subway has decided to go across the street to the...
Subway's gonna build on the Notty Pond.
Really?
But they're gonna have their own parking space.
So, they will be parking there at Toroni's.
Okay, so, besides Toroni customers, who's gonna be parking there?
We anticipate new businesses that'll open that will require parking there.
None of that block.
That block's full.
Well, you can park more than one block to go.
I can't.
Well, I can't tonight, because this has been the longest city council meeting in the history of the city of Evansville.
Unfortunately, that's not true.
That's true, that's not true.
Au contraire.
It's the longest one this week.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, if the next block, I'm just trying to think about this now, the next block you have, what is it?
We acquired a lot.
That adult playground?
The next block's got the IT place with...
HR connect.
HR, it's got the Catman real at the old building, but it's got its own...
DeLeggie's, they don't walk from DeLeggie's, yeah?
DeLeggie's has, he on his own.
Well, DeLeggie's is not in that next block, it's in the third.
Hey, what you're missing is those styles of bicycles that's gonna be going up and down that street.
They will, they will do, there'll be a lot more than that.
So, you put like three bicycles in every one of those slots, you're missing the big picture.
There will be. There will be. Stephanie will be up there with her, make sure you wear your helmet. Is there anything else?
We don't know yet.
Much profit, did he make off with that? I need to get into that business.
I can't answer that for you.
$55?
I'll take your word for it. But we, the Redevelopment Commission approved...
Terms of the sales disclosure forms, those are, those are available online.
I don't carry those around me, but the Redevelopment Commission, with your point, he's approved the purchase of those four parcels, and right under the bus with you, Stan, right under the bus with you, to replace the on-street parking.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure we don't have another question for you.
Okay.
Is there anyone that would like to talk about any other subject here tonight? Please. If you would wait just a second or two while she changes the tape.
Is that an eight-track?
Kenny Shubal, 2930 Gardena Drive, Council. As it seems, the city has five lawsuits regarding violations of civil rights by the Evansville Police Department. One in particular relates to a grandmother and her grandchild, which the Seventh Circuit Court of Appeals remanded back to the district courts for trial. According to the court's ruling, the case will go forward. If the city loses this case, and if the evidence that was brought forth to court is accurate, where will the city obtain settlement funds? And why does it seem that we have such a large number of alleged violations of civil rights? And what action has been implemented to prevent these occurrences in the future? And also, what was the cost of the litigation in these cases?
The litigation. We have an expert on that particular subject.
Marco DeLucio from the City Attorney's Office. I will ask Keith Von Deray, who is on vacation this week as well, to answer some of these questions. I will tell you that there were a couple of, if the facts are all right, if this, if that, we don't know that's gonna happen, that's the purpose of the trial, first of all. Secondly, I believe that this is probably a covered insured liability that JWF would handle, so there's insurance out there to cover that kind of thing. I believe that's correct, but I'll have to confirm that with Mr. Von Deray.
Were in the Seventh Circuit not, didn't they, aren't they, didn't they allow the personal suit against the members of the police department?
Again, Keith and Bob both litigated that issue, and I will find that answer. I know it went up to the Seventh Circuit, I know it was remanded back to the district court for trial, so I think, I believe there was a motion to dismiss or a motion for summary judgment.
Yeah, it was.
And that was turned down, and a lot of times, a lot of times, Stephanie, you know this, that when you file a motion for summary judgment or motion to dismiss, a lot of times those get remanded, and so that's nothing out of the ordinary, really. So, we will, as far as what the cost has been, we'll have to get back to you on that as well. So, I'll take that question, and we'll respond.
Would you know that within a couple of weeks?
I would know that in time for, Keith will be back, he's on vacation this week, I'll get with him, and we'll be at the next city council meeting and answer the question.
And I guess, yeah.
And I guess, maybe to his point, how do we pay for it? It's insured, but it covers under our liability insurance.
I believe that's, I believe that's correct.
So, obviously, the more claims we have, the more it's paid out, that might go up over time, but...
It's like, it's like any lawsuit, if you lose it, you're going to have to pay for it. There's no question about it.
Are you guys actually being paid by J.W.F. on this as opposed to the city for the litigation?
I don't know a hundred percent sure on that. I believe it's a J.W.F. case. I will find that out and answer that question.
Is, is it true that we have, do we have five cases?
I can't answer, I don't know if it's five, four, or six. But there are, there are pending lawsuits that are being handled by a firm all the time. Whether there are five civil rights cases, I couldn't tell you right now. I can tell you there's five lawsuits.
Can you let us know that?
I can do that, too.
Thank you.
Yes, I think we had a new torts claim notice that was in our packet this time, maybe the Hot's Grill, you probably know that one.
We, we, at any one time, there's, I think there's a tort claim notice that comes in every day, so that, that wouldn't surprise me, and I saw the one in the packet this evening.
Okay, if you'll join us two weeks from now, we'll answer that question.
He had a question about what the city is doing in terms of policy to avoid this kind of thing, but I think that's probably an E.P.D. question. That's the one thing-
Other question you have, sir?
Just one more.
Oh.
What form of approval mechanism is in place to oversee what happens to the, to the alleged abuse of travel by various departments? One in question, or one for example, is that of the selected fire officials traveling twice to New Orleans coinciding with Mardi Gras.
I guess the only thing we could say, and I don't know the answer to this-
Chief, if you want to answer that?
But I guess every travel voucher would have to be approved, but-
I know, we have a certain amount of money that we are allowed for traveling, and usually someone has a good thought and wants to make it. Ask me or the president if it's a sort of seemly way of doing it. Councilwoman Breakoff Riley went to, up to Detroit, and I thought did a good job in terms of summarizing it.
To answer your question about travel requests, we do have them approved through the mayor's office, controller's office. Expenditures are all approved.
Before the trip?
Before the trip, when we purchased a fire truck, coincidentally, the fire truck manufacturer is in Holden, Louisiana, forty-five minutes outside of New Orleans, and we never went through during Mardi Gras.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else would like to talk tonight? Sure, why not? There's somebody behind you, but that's okay.
Good evening, counsel. I promise you, I only have seventeen questions. I'm joking, I'm not gonna do that to you. Approximately one million of the nation's poorest people are slated to be cut off a SNAP in October of this year and throughout 2016, as a three-month limit on SNAP benefits for unemployment, unemployed adults ages eighteen to fifty will be implemented along with new requirements of the recipients to work for their food stamps. These individuals whose average income while on SNAP equals nineteen percent of the poverty level lose food assistance after three months regardless of how hard they are looking for work. More than twenty thousand Evansvilleans will suddenly lose approximately a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars per person per month in food assistance. According to the Center on Budget and Policy Priorities, we should prepare heavily affected local communities for increased demand at food banks and homeless shelters. What is the city doing in preparation for this change, for the job market influx, and for the crime increase which is sure to follow those who not, who cannot find work or food? And if the city is doing nothing to prepare for this, why?
You're representing the city tonight?
I promise you, I wrote this question myself.
Great.
I wasn't even aware of the problem, to tell you the truth, it's a change in federal law, the-
Yeah, I, I was just gonna say, I can take the question, or we can certainly get an answer.
I think Kelly did-
Oh, Kelly.
Oh, my God.
You lied to me. And you look like an honest person. You lied to me. You, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. He said, he said, I don't have any questions.
I didn't think I had questions.
Kelly, it's ten of nine, Kelly.
It's fine. We, we receive two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars a year from HUD in what's called emergency solution grants, E.S.G. And those funds are provided to seven local agencies, which provide care and housing for the homeless. And the bulk of the money goes to Aurora, which is set up as a centralized intake center for people who have become or are about to become homeless, so that they can do what we like to call smart placement. Find a place where the kids are already going to school, find a place where mom may already have a job. So we, we fund about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand a year. One year I had to throw some CDBG in there, but we fund almost sixty-two agencies with our public service dollars from block grant. And last year, we funded over fifty-seven thousand meals in the community for, with the Tri-State Food Bank, the, are you familiar with the Backpack Program?
Yeah.
We fund, we fund the Backpack Program, we fund Tri-State Food Bank, we fund, we fund a number of agencies that provide meals for people. So hopefully, the Congress will not cut either our community development block grant money for 2016, and especially our E.S.G. grant, which we use to take care of the most vulnerable people, the people who have no place to live. We just finished our point-in-time count, which showed on any given night, something like four hundred people are without housing, and something like sixty are inhabiting a place not fit for human habitation, like those dilapidated houses that we want to tear down. But the, but DMD, we work with the Y.W.C.A., we work with the House of Bread and Peace, work with Goodwill, we work with, we work with every agency that provides services to homeless people. And we, this council appropriates every cent of that money to those agencies, so nothing, none of those funds ever falls out and has to be re-appropriated, like we talk about block grant money. And, and I can tell you that my staff, I have one person on my staff who has more knowledge of homelessness in her brain than I will ever have in my entire lifetime. And she works very diligently with the Homeless Service Council and the Commission on Homelessness. Does that answer your question?
Well, I think it, it answers my question as, as far as what you already do, but I'm concerned about the, the increase.
So, so am I, so am I. And I'm, I've got my fingers crossed that Congress won't cut our funds anymore, but they're not gonna send us any new funds. That I can tell you.
Thank you, sir.
It's all right.
Yes, sir. One more. Please, sir. Join us, yes, sir, you. Thank you for being so patient. Your name and address, sir?
I've got the rest of my life.
So do I. Name and address.
My name is Ron Montler, and I live at twenty-five, twenty-nine South Ruston Avenue in Evansville, Indiana. And I got a couple of questions. I gotta, I gotta read them, I forget them. The property located at the corner of North Main Street and Columbia, commonly known as the CVS Building, has been on the market for nearly three years with apparently no credible offers. And now the city has purchased this for five-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars. Now we understand that the city has no idea of what to do with the structure or the property. Why would the DMD acquire such a property without knowing exactly what to do with it and for such a ridiculous amount of money?
I thought it was gonna be a community center. I thought it was gonna be subleased.
See rumors?
No, I mean, it was gonna be a community in there.
Well, the only, the original plan, when the ERC, when your ERC representative voted to approve that purchase, we were gonna demolish the building. We were gonna demolish the building and repurpose the entire lot for parking. That was the, that was the initial thought process. Now, the building is not that old, and it is in fairly decent shape. It needs some interior remodeling, and for whatever purpose, we could find a tenant, might have to do some exterior work, adding windows. We've had, I've had some inquiries about the building. We have it up for, we have, we're offering it for lease, for the market, for the market lease price right now, which is fifteen hundred triple net, which is very high for that building in that neighborhood. Now, what I told you was, I had some inquiries from some not-for-profits who would be interested in locating in that building. Should we choose to not demolish it, and should we choose to go ahead and lease it? We can't sell it, because then it wouldn't be public parking anymore. But the big lot all around there is still public parking and will be public parking. The city will continue to own it. We are trying to source out a tenant for the building. For thirty days, we have to offer it for the market price, for the average of two appraisals of rent for thirty days. After that thirty days is over, then the redevelopment commission can entertain other offers below that appraised market price. So I've had, I've had three, actually, not-for-profits express an interest in the building.
Kelly, what is the market rent price? What is it?
Fifteen hundred triple net.
Okay, that's eighteen, was it?
The taxes, the taxes are roughly three hundred a month.
That's eighteen thousand.
About eighteen hundred, eighteen hundred a month.
About eighteen, well, that thing would be worth more than two-hundred thousand dollars a year at a ten percent discount rate.
I think friend accounting should-
Yeah, yeah. I'm just saying.
But remember, it's only for thirty days. After that thirty days, the state statute says we can entertain lower offers-
I know, but on my point being, if it's only two, it's under, if you're talking about eighteen thousand dollars a year in rent, that building wouldn't be worth more than a hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars. It would be worth more than a hundred, why would we pay five-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand?
The ERC, the ERC approved purchasing it at the average of two appraisals, which is following the state statute.
Okay, sir, you got your first question answered. What's your next question?
Well, I don't know, we be answered this. Where's the city going to obtain the funds for demolition?
Well, we're not sure. I'm not sure it's gonna be demolished at this point.
Oh, that's, that question-
Sounds like they're trying not to demolish it. I think it is a good building.
It's not that old.
I got another question.
Sure.
Is it true that the DMD has purchased, purchased, or is in the process of purchasing a vacant Davco located at the corner of Columbia and North Main for a substantial price? And if so, why hasn't the council been informed of?
There's a one-word answer for that, sir?
No.
No. In sign language, it's, oh.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other people like to get up? Sure.
Oh, my God.
I'd like your glasses.
I have two questions, and I will attempt to be brief. My name is Daniel Falet. I reside at sixteen-fifty Cook Avenue. Is it true that Mr. Mounds has a plan brewing to spend in excess of fifty million dollars on a north-side water, wastewater facility? And wasn't this project, if so, wasn't this project scrapped by the former mayor as being unnecessary? And if that is the case, why would the utility venture into this project wasting more rate pairs money?
You wanna know, is the utility department looking to make a north-side utility processing of sewer, sewer processing center?
Yes, sir.
I don't think it is.
They did this back, I think, under the-
Yeah, they did.
Back in two thousand and seven, I think Mayor Winesapple was gonna do it, and then he scrapped it.
Yeah, and then they decided they would, they would build up the west and east ones, they didn't need a north one. To my knowledge, I don't think we're, I don't think we're out doing that.
Okay, good, well, thank you very much for that one. And, and one other question. Is it true that there are national guidelines for professional certification to be a director of metropolitan development?
Absolutely not.
And I understand that.
Probably not, actually.
Throw a dart at a board.
Anybody, anybody.
He's a more gender writer.
Seriously, answer the question, I'm getting punchy here. Answer the question.
No.
So there are, there are not, okay. Then that makes rest of my question irrelevant, and I thank you for your time.
God bless you.
Maybe there is, so.
Would anyone else like to talk?
Does it start with, is it true? You all your votes like this, is this how you-
Come on, don't be a dick.
Sir, wait a minute, sir, that was an excellent question. Don't let these guys play games with you.
I'm gonna be treated, I apologize.
Okay.
Yeah, you should.
Okay, all right. Committee reports, Public Works, Chairman Lindsay.
We might just wait, just wait here, there's no sense going home. It's only a couple of weeks.
Two more hours, we'll be back again.
Come on, you know, let's just knock it all out. We got an ordinance G dash twenty-fifteen dash nineteen amended, and that will be amending chapter six point zero five of Animal Control, the Evansville municipal code. That'll be approximately at five-twenty. And then we've got ordinance G twenty-fifteen dash twenty-one at approximately five-twenty-five, and we'll be vacating some easements.
A.S.T. committee.
Mr. President, there's nothing at this time, but I think the clerk's office opens in a few hours, so, I mean, there might be something filed, but nothing at this time.
Finance committee.
Nothing.
Okay. There are some bars on Main Street that are still open. Okay, motion for adjournment. Thank you.
But they want a map?
It's longer to go back?
No, it's longer to go there, because they didn't have a map then. And then when they got there, they drew a map to go back.
Like a map there on their way, it was easier to go back, 'cause they had a map.
How do we know that it was, took less time to go back?
Because they drew a map and they knew where to go.
Because they could get like the wrong path on the road without the map, again.
To the end.
Yeah.
Like the shit.
Was there any evidence that we had that, that told us how long it took them to get back?
It says like to the explorers, a six-month return journey, so that means it probably took six months.
She's finally, finally, they, they came there on March twenty-third, eighteen oh six. Then on September twenty-third, eighteen oh six, the Lewis and Clark expedition arrives safely back in St. Louis, Missouri.
Okay, so did that surprise you that it took less time to get back?
But it also says where their journey had begun more than two years earlier.
Oh, you didn't answer your question. You don't need me. I was really happy with the conversation that I heard when we did the brainstorm, how respectfully the students were speaking with each other and listening to each other's ideas.
I was surprised that the falls are like six-story buildings, 'cause I think it's really, really high. And it's really dangerous. So if they, if they hadn't actually, if, good thing they actually went around, but it actually took them a while, so if they went just through the waterfall, like, just like swim or canoe to the water, yeah, yeah, they could get killed with all those rocks right there.
In the brainstorm, the Common Core standards that we were focusing on were the speaking and listening standard of engaging in a collaborative discussion, and also being prepared for a discussion, because it was a way of preparing. But also, the reading standard of quoting accurately from a text to support your thinking. So after we do the small group brainstorm, I asked them to come prepared for text talk time. And text talk time is a discussion structure that I created in order to give the kids an opportunity to talk about a text that we had been reading during the week. It's an opportunity for them to call the shots and to discuss what they were thinking when they read the text. And it's also an opportunity for me to ask questions that challenge them and that I'll later expect them to respond to in writing. Before we get started, I want to go over the expectations like we do every single time. One person speaks at a time. And lately, remember, we've been kind of talking about how sometimes we get excited and we all start joining in and blurting out, and that's okay. and we all start joining in and blurting out, and that's okay every once in a while. That happens in normal conversation. But we just remember that if I call for the zero noise signal, that we're all going to come back as a group and hear one person. Listen carefully to the speaker, right? You don't know if you're adding something if you're not listening to what someone else said, right? So you need to listen carefully. And use hand signals, so two fingers if you have something to add on to what somebody has already said, and thumbs up if you have something new to say. I use a strategy of hand signals in order to promote active listening. I also use hand signals to help me facilitate the conversation. Oh, wow, lots of thinking. This strategy has been really effective because raising your hand wasn't enough. It's give students an opportunity to show me that they have something to say. If you have something new to say, it looks like. Okay.
I have two questions.
Pose them to the group.
Okay, so the first one is, what happened to the ship after they left? The ship that was going to come, and they waited?
Can we go to that part? Do you know what page it said that on, so we can? For the first 20 minutes of the conversation, I'm just choosing students. I'm trying to give turns to an equal number of students from different parts of the circle. I'm the facilitator in this discussion. Natalia, you have something to add?
I was also on Sacagawea. It was hard probably for her because she had her baby with her. And to go around that river and stuff, like babies, like we were talking about in our group, babies need a lot of good care. And it would be hard to go through all that, especially with a baby.
Do we have evidence that, that Sacagawea was with them when they crossed the falls? I know, I don't think she was with them the whole time. Devante, do you see where there's evidence?
In the picture, it shows Sacagawea, Sacagawea, she's pointing at the falls, and Lewis and Clark in a slave, they're like, Sacagawea is like pointing that they might die in the fall, so they probably have to go around it.
And since I know that this is a narrative nonfiction, and we've been learning about how in nonfiction, the pictures and the captions, that gives us lots of information, we could probably be pretty sure that Sacagawea was with them and that this picture is placed here to give us that information. Next, I give them questions that I expect them to write about once we're done with text talk time. Let me pose these questions to you so we can get a little bit of talking about this before I send you out to write. I'm going to take us back to viewpoint. It's not why the author wrote, but how the author feels about something. How does the author feel about Lewis and Clark? So will you take a minute and turn and talk to the person sitting next to you about what you're thinking about this question? What do you think the author, how do you think the author feels about Lewis and Clark? After I pose a question to the group, I give the students an opportunity to turn and talk as a way to give them a few minutes to talk and think about possible answers before they feel like they need to share that with the whole group. Who thinks they found some evidence to back up what they think about how the author feels about Lewis and Clark? Let's go to Alyssa.
It says on page 644, from St. Louis, Lewis and Clark traveled to Washington, DC, and almost every town they passed through, they brought bands to welcome them as heroes, which meant that like whenever they came in, everyone was like cheering and like congratulate them. And so like the author like put that in to make everyone feel that they're heroes.
Yeah. So you would say that the author, the author feels like Lewis and Clark were heroes? The next question was, what is the author's viewpoint about exploring? And I provided them with a sentence frame to start their answer. The author thinks exploring is... If you were going to fill in this sentence, how would you fill it in? The author thinks exploring is...
I think it's exciting because you could find out new stuff, that different things you never knew about.
Okay, like here on 644, I noticed connecting with what you, what you were saying, that it's exciting because you found things that I'd never found before. Like on page 644, it says, "The expedition returned with numerous samples of plant and animal life that had never been seen by American scientists."
Especially in those times, it's, North America wasn't North America yet. It was just, it was called the New World. Yeah, so it was, it was pretty interesting to them because they found new plants, new animals, new stuff they could use.
And on 641, I noticed that he said, "I found a descriptor word. They emerged from the Rocky Mountains into the lovely valley of Clearwater River." If the author's using an opinion word like lovely, that's sort of showing how they feel about something. So I'm thinking that it's time to change gears. We need to get up and go back to our desks and start getting our minds ready for writing. In today's discussion, I posed the question about how the author feels about exploring, how the author feels about Lewis and Clark, with the expectation that the students were going to pull evidence from the text to support those statements. That's challenging work, and I knew that it would be pretty challenging for the students to work on individually and writing. So doing all that difficult thinking together in a group while they had support and they could hear other ideas is helpful for them, and I think it makes it easier for them to write about it individually later. The standards I addressed in this text talk time were speaking and listening standard on engaging in a collaborative discussion and being prepared for a discussion. They had to come prepared. But also, the reading standard of quoting accurately from a text to support your thinking. I want to get us started on this quickly, because now that you have all your ideas in your head, I really want you to have an opportunity to put this on paper. In the next part of my class, I transition them into writing by asking them to respond in writing to the comprehension questions about author's viewpoint that we just talked about in text talk time. I want you to know how important your writing is to me and that this is a way of sharing your thinking with me, just like you did in text talk time, but in writing. The questions on your paper are the same questions we just talked about, so nothing is new here. The first one we talked about was, how does the author feel about Lewis and Clark? I give all my students the same task, and most of the students work individually on this assignment, while I pull a smaller group who needs more support from me. But even with the small group, the assignment is the same. Before we start answering the questions, will you guys remind me what viewpoint is?
Like something you see?
It's like what you see in your, in your mind, like what you think.
What you think and what you're seeing, so from your point of view?
Yeah, yeah. It's like your opinion, not someone else's.
So I'm hearing a lot of you, your, is it always just you, though?
No.
Because here it says, and like the second one says, what is the author's viewpoint?
They can talk about other people and talk, yeah.
The small group that I was working with today are all English language learners, so I knew when I started the group that I wanted to give them more opportunities to speak. The first question I posed to the group was, how does the author feel about Lewis and Clark? Brandon, maybe you want to read that question so we all are clear about it?
How does the author feel about Lewis and Clark?
Okay, so you said you have some ideas?
That they're really brave. They're like, they're like, they're not like going like saying like, I don't want to do this anymore. They don't change their mind. They're just like, we're going to do this, and we're going to go there.
I don't think they ever give up.
Yeah.
They're perseverant.
I think that that's what you were trying to say in text talk time, right, that you were like, they keep going, they, they don't give up, they, they persevere. Those are great words. Before we start writing, let's get our ideas out. Let's talk about our ideas. When we talk about things, it helps get our brain ready for writing. Once we've had a chance to share some ideas, then I asked them to help me come up with a first, a good first sentence. But what's one good starting sentence that we could come up with? Jesus, haven't heard from you yet.
Something that I would do was like, I think the other things that Lewis and Clark are brave.
They're, they're like brave, and they, nothing stops them. They're like.
Like, if nothing stops you, it's like determined, like you keep going and summing up in one word. What do you think, Alan? What are you thinking you're going to write for your big idea?
I'm going to write about my favorite ideas. Nothing stopped them.
This writing task is the culmination of all the work that we've done throughout the week with one shared text. I was really happy with how excited the kids were when they got to the small group and felt so confident in coming up with evidence to back up their thinking, and they knew what they were talking about. I had given them so much support, they felt.